Call our meeting to order. If you guys would, we have Mr. Merritt Vaughn coming today. If everyone will please rise, he's going to lead us in the invocation, followed by our pledges. You face this way, be fine.
All right, well, you know, one time I thought I might be in politics, but I think praying before a meeting is probably a higher honor, right? Is that right, Cole? All right, let's pray. Lord God, we just thank you. First of all, I just want to thank you for just this beautiful rain you've sent to this, to our land, and we need it, Lord. It brings, it brings life to our land. It's going to heal our burned land. Lord, I thank you for our leaders that are here today, our city council members, Mayor Cole. Just ask you bless them, give them wisdom and direction, Lord, as they make decisions for our city. And, Lord, we, I just thank you for the city of Amarillo, Lord, the place that we call home. And, Lord, it's a, it's a good place to be from, and I love this city. Romans 8:28 says, "Yet you work all things to the good for those that love God and that are called according to your purpose." And we are a community that loves you, Lord, and we are about your business. So, Lord, as I, as I close in prayer today, I was drawn this morning to Matthew 5:14 through 16, that says, "You are the light of the world; a city that is set on a hill cannot be hidden, nor do they light a lamp and put it under a basket, but on a lampstand, and it gives light to all who are in the house." It says, "So let your light so shine before men, that they may see your good works and glorify your Father in heaven." So, Lord, as I close in prayer, Amarillo, I declare that our light would shine so, so bright about this community, to the world, and of all the good works that are going on in our city. And at the end of the day, I pray that we glorify you, our Father in heaven. I pray this all in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. If you guys will join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag, please. Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, guys. Please be seated. All right, we, we'll go ahead and get started. We do have one announcement that I know of. Ms. City Secretary, do you mind to tell us, we've got a new hire, maybe who she is and what she'll be doing?
Yes, I'm going to invite up our-
Mrs. Laura Storrs.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We have an exciting announcement to make. We have recently hired a new finance director. So Katrina Owens has joined the city of Amarillo back on March 25th. Katrina has worked on the city's audit since 2012, is one of our external auditors, so she's very familiar with the inner workings of the city. She does have extensive knowledge of the city's financials. She also has a Bachelor of Business Administration and a Master of Professional Accounting degree from WT, along with a CPA license. Katrina has over 25 years of accounting experience in both private and public accounting. So I think, there she is. If she wants to stand or come-
Yeah, please come up, Ms. Katrina. So we, we just want to say welcome. I know you're, you're not brand-new here. You've got some good history and experience with us, and this is a department that we definitely have, have seen a little bit of turnover, and we need the additional support. And so, welcome, and, and we just want to make sure you've got everything you need to, to get to work.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mrs. Storrs, for that introduction. Do we have any further announcements? Mr. Hartman, no? Ms. City Secretary, nothing else on your list? Okay, great. At this time, we're going to move toward public comment, and I'd ask our city secretary to go ahead and begin with calling anyone up that's signed up online.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we are glad you're here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items or topics relating to city policy. Every speaker today will have three minutes to address the council. At the end of two and a half minutes, you'll hear a warning beep alerting you, you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your comments. We do have public hearings today. If you're here to speak on a public hearing, we would ask you to speak either during public comment or during the public hearing, but not both, in order to help us keep accurate records. It's your decision at which point you'd like to speak. When you come to the microphone today, please state your name and whether or not you live in Amarillo City Limits. And our only speaker signed up today is Jim Carter. Is Mr. Carter in the room? If not, I would turn it back over to the mayor to take those that are not signed up.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Carter, just one final opportunity. If you're here, would love to hear from you. Okay, so he's, he is not here today, but I would ask if I've got anyone else here in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward. If you'd state your name again, please.
Nathan Smith, sorry about that. I thought I signed up. That's weird. Anyway, Nathan Smith, I do live in Amarillo City Limits. I always open with a verse. Timothy, 1 Timothy, chapter 2, verses 11 and 12. "A woman should learn in quietness and full submission. I do not permit a woman to teach or to assume authority over a man; she must be quiet." My primary purpose here is the same as it's been for the last couple of weeks, a couple of months, whatever. I want these sanctuary city dudes ran by Markley Dixon and his little group. I would very much like their proposal to go to direct vote. Don't wait for their petition. Let's find out if the people of Amarillo want to make this a sanctuary city. The thing is, I looked into Markley Dickinson's past, and I'm not going to go into long similarities, but we shared adulthood depression, both of us. One of us crawled themselves out of it where there's strong faith in a Bible, and that's fantastic. That, to me, if I could have done that, beautiful, beautiful thing. I went the harder route, you know, severe substance use disorder, rehab, lots of legal issues, you know, the fun stuff. And it would be great if he left it at there. He found his faith, and that would be fantastic. It would keep him happy, yada, yada, yada. The problem is, he decided to make it my problem when he decided he's going to go city-to-city and make sure local cities, we already live in a state that's declared my daughter's incub- It's fine. It's not fine. We've already, we already live in a state that's declared my daughter's incubators. That's fantastic. Now, this guy, who is not from my city, is coming to my city and saying we should double down on that. I have a problem with that. Dude has decided to make his purpose goal in life to make sure all the potential women and half the population are little more than incubators. That's an interesting take. I like to take dudes' doughnuts, like, it's sense of purpose. It's important. So I would like to once again call the council to have that vote. And for the second verse, I'm using Matthew, chapter 6, 5, verses 5 and 6. "And when thou prayest, thou shall not be as the hypocrites are, for they love to pray standing in the synagogues and in the corners of the streets, that they may be seen of men. Verily I say unto you, they have their reward. But thou, when thou prayest, enter into thy closet, and when thou hast shut thy door, pray to thy father, which is in secret; and thy father, which seeth in secret, shall reward thee openly." So, yeah, I'm still talking with that dude. I'm not talking with him, but that message, get rid of the invocation and replace it with a moment of silent reflection, where you can do whatever you want in silence. That would be fantastic. And I bring this up because we're not a theocracy, and the funniest thing is, we're not a theocracy. If you've read the Constitution, you understand that. If you read the Bible, you know that pairing it with the Constitution would be blasphemy, because you're pairing the sacred duct. And our God Emperor Republican nominee, the party that represents this city, they're now selling Bibles paired with the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence. I love the Bible. It's a very useful tool for manipulating people. Anyway, y'all have a wonderful day.
Mr. Smith, as always, we appreciate you sharing the word with us today. Have a good afternoon, sir. Do I have anyone else here? I see Mr. James Skank here. We'll let you go first.
God bless the rain. Man, I'm getting a ton over my place. We're floating. I come to speak on a couple of things that's gone on last meeting, and I saw y'all were going to be talking about it in the executive session, so I'm not sure what y'all have decided on. And that's Proposition 1, and the ongoing discussion about that. You know, as you know, I mean, I know the history of this from the beginning, and it was done, two groups before you, it was done with Harpo and Terry Childers and that group that laid a pretty massive bond on us, and I'm glad most of it didn't pass, because we were still digging into a hole. First off, that's, the way I look at both of those bonds, those two things, public safety and streets, needed to have some money thrown at them, seriously, just like you're trying to do now, when you're passing the bond to start a regenerative flow of money towards streets. And, you know, it should be a learning experience, you know, should be a lesson to most, to this group, is that you can't put bloated budgets, bloated bonds, on folks and expect things to happen. Talking with the people shortly after that happened, there's no way we're going to get to that, those streets. And so here we are now, eight years later, and we're still trying to figure out what to do with the last, anywhere from 30 to 10 to 20 to 40, I don't know how many millions. We've got some money to put down. Couple of questions on those issues of, when you look at, when you look at the numbers, I've got just a couple of questions, well, several, but I noticed projects were deprioritized, and I was wondering if y'all had anything to say with that, about what was taken away from one and put toward another, and, you know, and why did you do that? And I'm sure there's reasons on some level, but it would be nice to see that atomized in some reason and fashion, to, to see why, you know, certain quadrants got a ton more money. And I've talked to most people in most quadrants, and they don't see much happening, still. And then there's one other question that's going on, it's just a, Herring Plaza. You know, I see something that's going on on another group, our Tier 1 group, wanting to spend a little bit of money to do something, and we weren't involved with that when, when Bob Goodrich was trying to get help and trying to be included and all, and now, all of a sudden, this little thing goes on, and it might be something that needs to be done to get a, but I don't know that the city should be involved in that. So, you know, tread lightly, friends, and God bless these gentlemen that are here today to protect us and serve for us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Skank. Thank you for speaking. Do I have anyone else here that would like to speak today? Yes, sir. If you could state your name, whether you live in the city limits, maybe some form of ID that we could verify.
I'm sure a lot of people know who I am, unfortunately for them, I guess. Craig Alt here, and yes, I do live inside the city limits. I just wanted to, what I'm going to state here is on the AEDC, each one of you, I've given you, I've CC'd you on all my open records requests and the answers that I got, but what I wanted to do was, is I wanted to make this public for the general public to know what's going on at the AEDC. I set the alarm bells off years ago about some dealings, especially with our travel budget and things that they were spending some money on, and we got a lot of changes through reform on there, but I think we have a little bit more work to do. Number one, the public needs to know that the AEDC is the only department in the city of Amarillo that gave cash bonuses to their employees. Some as high as $25,000, $12,000. And the problem with that is, gentlemen, is that we have, you have over 2,000 employees that don't have this benefit. They have the benefit over there, where all those jobs that are over there are highly-paid jobs. And it's not like we're trying to bring up a, you know, a sanitation worker up or a police officer's lower-end salary up. These are very well-compensated jobs, getting $25,000 a year jobs. Two of his employees of the AEDC are in your top seven highest-paid position in the city of Amarillo. Number two, all the employees had evaluation forms, and each one of them received the highest mark you could receive. I've had hundreds of employees, I can, and along with myself, I don't ever remember me or any of my employees being perfect, but they're perfect over at the AEDC. They also were received, along with the cash bonuses, was a 4% COLA that everybody at the city received. Of course, everybody at the city also didn't receive a cash bonus like they did. The real problem that I have here is our president over at the AEDC, even Kevin, at the AEDC, Kevin Carter, received a $49,200 cash bonus, on top of his 4% bonus, which equals to be another $10,000 increase in his salary, which makes Mr. Carter the highest-paid person at the city of Amarillo, well over $300,000 in total compensation. Matter of fact, he makes double of what our governor of state of Texas makes. Now, a problem with that is, that I have a major problem with that is, is that Mr. Carter received an evaluation from his, with the board, no written evaluation. It was all verbal, and then the board came out and voted on his raise. And so we can't even justify his raise in the sense of, as the public. I also have some quick problems in regards to their travel policy. Mr. Carter uses his own credit card for all his travel purchases, and then gets reimbursed from the city with those travel, with those travel purchases. So he's receiving points and benefits off of using, basically, the expenditures of the city. He has a company credit card issued to him by the city of Amarillo that he should be using, along with, and Mayor, I hope you can give me just one more minute here and I'll finish up. Another thing is, is that Mr. Carter, unlike all the rest of our city employees, he believes when he's on, when he's traveling, that the taxpayers are just going to pay for everything that he does. If he wants to go and get a candy bar, Coke, a couple of hot dogs, and a bag, and a bag of Pringles, he doesn't. He pays for it with the city's, with the city's credit card, or his own credit card, and gets reimbursed. But yet, the policy at the city is, employees, when they're traveling, if they go and buy a hot dog, or they go and buy a candy bar and a Coke, that's their meal, but not with Kevin Carter. Matter of fact, Kevin Carter stops at CVS on his way to the hotel and buys him six or seven Diet Cokes and takes with him to his hotel at taxpayer expense. The bottom problem with that, with that is, is that this guy makes over $300,000. He can't pay for his own Coke and candy bars, but the taxpayer's going to pay for it? And lastly, I've got a lot more, but I'm going to respect your time and appreciate the extra time, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
But one of the other problems is, is Mr. Carter pays with taxpayer money lunches for clients, which we all think that that's very important, but also, he refuses to, A, give me or the taxpayers, let us know who he bought those lunches for. He won't log down with those, who he had lunches with, and what the taxpayers paid for. So all I'm asking, I've got a lot of other issues here, but at least those are the big highlights. All I'm asking for is that maybe the mayor, along with city council, will pick up the phone and call the chair, Mr. Paul, or call Kevin himself, and say that we need some basic little oversight changes to our travel policy, for instance, and then we also, when it comes to budget, we, we need to look at cash bonuses, if that's the right thing to do, with our taxpayer money, to be giving people cash bonuses, when our other hard-working 2,000 city employees do not have that same luxury. Thank you.
We appreciate you speaking, sir. Thank you. Do I have anyone else here today that would like to address the council? Yes, sir, please come forward. Ruben, if you give us your full name and address, please, sir.
Ruben Rivera, 1017 South Williams.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me just look in this real quick. I want to show you a few things.
Yes, sir, bring it up.
These are photos that I took prior to this accident taking place with my mother.
Okay.
At Alamo Park.
Can you give us the year, sir?
2000.
2000?
2020.
2020.
Yes, it's just this 1920, somewhere around there.
Go right ahead.
This is concerning this assessment that was made.
Yes, sir.
Those photos were not taken and are not in this assessment book, as well as the other park, East Park.
Would you like to look at those? Yes, sir.
Josh Kraft's already seen those photos.
Okay.
My concern is, the taxpayer also paid, was it $170,000 for this assessment? You had assigned Michael Keshu to give me a call back a while back-
Yes, sir.
-at a meeting. Never got a phone call.
Okay.
Then John Barnes called me on your behalf, asked me a bunch of questions and this and that, then you texted me back and said you wanted to know some more information. Had I spent an hour and a half with John Barnes, he said he was, he would relay, pass that on to you. Whether he got there, I don't know.
Thank you.
If that would have happened to your mother, I'd have been here an advocate for you too. That's not pretty. That shouldn't happen. These are issues that I brought up with Larry Orvindahl, Rod Tweet, long time ago.
Right.
When I was on the Community Development Law Grant Board, we used to do tours of any of the funding that we gave to the, whatever establishment it was. That's just wrong, man. If one of your mothers cracked her head open at that park, I'd be there advocating for you too. It's not pretty. Amarillo Police Department, Amarillo Fire Department, everybody, all the emergency systems were there. They said, "Why the hell can't the city do better than that?" To this day, Laura Storrs, you told me you was going to do something about these parks. I just took some pictures about that park, too, on East Park. It hasn't been addressed. This one got addressed only because I pushed it. It's not, it's not good, man. And we're not going to do nothing. We're not going to do our due diligence, and why do we have taxpayers $170,000 here? Why? That's just wrong. T. Anchor Lake, that's another project. Over 200 police phone calls have been made to that park. Five or six deaths have been, hasn't been addressed by engineering, by anybody. That's been brought up to several of these commission meetings. I'm the one who brought them up. That underpass here on Third Street, I know it takes time. You've got several people involved in that group, in that project. Yes, it takes time, and it takes money, and dealing with text dots is not the easiest thing to do. But that's been 20 years ago. In 2004, I brought this up. I brought this up, never got addressed. Am I right? I brought that up. Many, many times I brought that up. On that underpass there on, on Third Street, get this. I called the city engineering department, no phone, no return phone calls. Called the street department, no phone calls. I called the fire department chief, Jason Mays, no phone call, no return phone calls. Called Martin Burklinfield, no return phone calls. I called DC, he called me the next day. What's wrong with us? Something wrong with us? You be the judge. I know these projects take time, and I know they take money, but this underpass has been like that for a long time.
Mr. Rivera, I apologize for the communication component, but we do have a current contract to evaluate that underpass. It just got executed. We are in progress. So that is the ownership component, to know who is responsible for what piece. We do have that going.
I do have, I do have the ownership component on that.
Yeah, and so we're verifying that with the railroad, so we can define it. On T. Anchor Lake, we do have that in the state flood plan for that project to go as a floodplain project. Okay.
Okay.
So the communication component, we can, we will work on and fix. We apologize for that.
Mr. Rivera, couple things. One, I think you might want this back. I appreciate you bringing it. I did get your emails today.
This one right here.
Correct, yes. We all looked at them. I did get your emails today. I'll respond to that. I think my next step with you would be to just schedule a meeting, have you come in, sit down in the office with staff, and then, our last conversation, we talked about having solutions to these problems, and you are definitely making us aware of these problems, and you're also willing to bring some solutions. We're, we're willing to work with you. So, so I know, I know it can feel antagonistic, but we're not. We're not antagonistic to your, to your cause, and I'll do everything I can to help you.
I believe you. I believe you. I'm hoping that this new commission would do something, because the past hasn't done nothing.
Right. Well, I'll email you, we'll schedule that meeting.
You know, our alleys, our trash cans, our streets, you could put a $100 million budget in the streets and still not have enough money.
Oh, we understand. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you speaking today.
If you want to send pictures, look, here they are. She cracked her head open. She wouldn't even use that which her, the power chair bought her.
Do I have anyone else here that would like to address council today?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll be in touch with you. Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. I do appreciate everyone speaking. We don't claim to have the answers, we just claim to be willing to prioritize you as a citizen and willing to work on it. And, and I know myself and council, sometimes the answer is, I'm sorry, I can't help you. It's not in my scope, or it's not in our jurisdiction, but sometimes it is, and, and we will continue to make progress. So, moving along, we are going to close public comment, move on to Section 7. We'll go to 7A, and I would ask if council has anything that they have request on the agenda for a review?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Seeing nothing, we'll move on to Item 7B. We do have a few red shirts in the audience here, as well as some of our distinguished police officers and SWAT team, and so we appreciate you guys being here. Mr. Freeman, if you go ahead and lead us into this discussion.
Yes, sir. So before I get started, I did want to thank Todd Peden and Toby Hudson, they're here representing, as well as a lot of other members in the public. I appreciate all the work they put into this negotiation so far. It's been about 14 years or so since I've- It's been about 14 years or so since I've been involved in a meet and confer negotiation, and you always hear how controversial they can be or how tough they can be. But these, these two groups have been nothing but respectful, and we've had great conversations up until this point. I know we're going to continue to. Today's meeting is really to get council up to speed on what's taken place so far, get a little bit of history, and really kind of dig into the budgetary request and get some feedback from council moving forward. A little history on meet and confer. It's Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 143, that allows cities to enter into these agreements. Just covering a little background. And then within that same section also shows, basically the whole point of these agreements is that you can exceed or alter what state law allows. So it's more of a kind of a customized agreement between these associations based on benefits, policies, et cetera. So that's the kind of legal code aspect. Previous city councils have recognized both associations as a sole and exclusive bargaining agent for the firefighters and the police officers respectfully to negotiate on their behalf. Whether they're union members or not, any one of those departments are represented by these two groups in these negotiations. As far as previous agreements, the Police Officers Association is currently in their second multi-year agreement. It's set to expire on 9/30/2024, but it does have a date moving to 2025 to give time to get a successor agreement in place before it fully expires. And then the Firefighters Association recently had their first agreement approved just late last year and is set to expire on 9/30/24 as well. What these agreements typically focus on is base wages, supplemental pays, certification pays, those sorts of things. It can also look at additional employee benefits, AL vacation leave buyback sort of programs, the hiring process, whether there's going to be a special hire, hiring process for lateral transfers between other city departments, or maybe it's a different promotional process that allows the chiefs more flexibility on how they want to assign those positions and hire for those positions. And then it also allows for a grievance arbitration process for anybody that needs, needs that process that's been impacted by what's laid out in these agreements. As far as the timeline of the current negotiations, both kicked off in early February, and we've had four meetings so far with both groups, and we are on track to meet again on the 16th next week with both groups as well. We set those specifically to be able to follow up based on this conversation, the feedback we received today. And then just want to note that all these meetings are posted on the website and they're open to the public attend. I know we've had multiple council members sent in on various negotiation meetings so far to become more familiar with the process. Just a little high-level overview. So we, we discuss all kinds of topics in these, in these meetings. Many of them do not have a financial impact. They're really policy-oriented or along those lines. So I just want to touch on a few of the fire discussion topics. Staffing model is really their current staffing model that they operate under, similar to the pension contribution cap, zero callback, longevity and clothing allowance. These are existing policies within the department, but the purpose of putting them in the agreement is that it solidifies it and doesn't allow the chief or administration to change it without violating that agreement. So gives a little more security of expectations. They've also talked about their initial rank of hosemen or firefighter have to be in that position five years before moving up to the next step. That allows more time after you complete the academy to get on-the-job experience before promoting to that next level. We've discussed the annual leave buyback program, which is an existing program, some potential tweaks to that one, the addition of a sick leave buyback being an option, washers and dryers at each fire station. We only have them at a handful now, but it allows them to clean all their stuff on-site without having to take it on home, risk their home and their clothes by mixing all that together, which is really a safety aspect. Since this is a, the first major meet and confer agreement with fire, there's also discussions like association business leave. This is something the police department's already had that allows them to pull hours from their union members to be used on city business, for union business, whether they go on trips to association conferences, training, or even more negotiations through the meet and confer process. Those are things that could be covered under that leave. Cancer screening is another one we've looked at, and then of course, we looked at pay raises and incentive pay, those financial aspects. As far as police, we spent a lot of time just cleaning up the existing agreement language. Since they have that, had a couple of rounds of that, just continued to clean up that language. We've talked a little bit about updating and clarifying the promotional examination requirements. We've talked about take-home vehicles, which we think may be a possibility as we further evaluate the lease arrangement versus buying vehicles outright. So that was a topic we touched on. Not sure if it'd really be built into the agreement, but maybe acknowledge that it's a, a long-term goal, maybe a short-term goal for certain divisions of the police department. We talked again about the AL vacation buyback programs, talked a little bit about the drug testing policies and maybe some revisions to allow, make it a little bit more efficient, have somebody come on-site and allow everybody to be randomly screened compared to now. Say you're in a minor vehicle accident, currently, everybody has to go get tested immediately, whether they're at fault or really involved in the accident. So clarifying some of those things that in the past have kept folks from being back in their vehicles, taking care of these calls and incidents. We talked about a new idea as far as having a, a police officer association employee basically full-time assigned to that role. That would be kind of their eight-to-five job, unless they're called for overtime or some emergency disaster happens and they need to work. But talking with their team, these, these agreements, their role basically being a liaison for their, their union members really has become a full-time job that impacts doing their, their police job. So that's something that's becoming more common with some of the, the larger organizations in the state. Then we, of course, talked about pay raises, incentive pay, ideas for field training officer pay. Those are the officers dedicated to training up our new cadets before they get out in the field on their own. On-duty workouts and fitness pay revisions, seniority pay, and then overtime pay and shift differential pay. And then we also talked a lot about our timekeeping software. As you all know, we switched to a new Workday program that we have had some challenges with, that we continue to work through. So we've been open with discussions with them to see if there's another option or alternative that might work better for their needs and their multiple different shifts that they have on duty. Then the main part that we want to discuss with you today and get some feedback are the pay proposals. So I'm going to walk through the original proposals, some cost-of-living adjustment factors, just so you can kind of see what that looks like in comparison, knowing that's only one factor that we look at when we're evaluating other markets. And then I'll also go over some options of how this might be paid for, what we expect for new revenue next year, what are some of our gaps and challenges. So the way the pay raise proposals were brought forward, really by both groups, it's really looking at a market comparison of five larger and five smaller cities. So what you see on this screen are various cities like Lubbock, Laredo, Irving, Garland, Frisco, and others that really are similar population size, similar department size, and so forth. And what this one shows, just taking all the different ranks and comparisons, you see kind of toward the bottom above the, the first blue minimum, you'll see the pay difference by rank. So across from left to right, cadets, 13% paid more than we pay, 38% with firefighter, 15% for driver, 18% lieutenant, captain, 17%, and battalion chief, 16%. So based on this market study, those are how much other entities are paying compared to what we pay today. As far as looking at it with the cost-of-living adjustment factored in, which looks at housing, food, utilities, transportation, healthcare costs, taxes, and childcare prices, what it shows is an adjustment for all of these. The one that we are lacking the most in is the firefighter pay, which shows that we pay 8%, 8% less, but it actually, when you adjust for this factor, we pay about 8% to 9% more in the other categories. On the left side of the screen, that's where you can show how much more expensive these places are based on the cost-of-living factor. So just an example, Frisco, 34%, McKinney, 34%, Garland, 26%, Lubbock, 9.2. So that's just based on all the data that this company pulls together from census, market studies of what it costs to live in that city compared to Amarillo. And again, this is just one viewpoint. We know we have other challenges. Just because it's maybe more affordable living in Amarillo doesn't mean we could still recruit people here, because they may prefer the quality of life or the amenities in Dallas area that we don't have here. So they're not just looking at where is it most affordable to live. To summarize the impact of what the request is, so it's 13.35% up to 38%, depending on the rank, is the proposed changes. And the way the, the fire union proposed is basically it's a moving average, so every year we'd look at it and adjust based on those 10 cities, and that would kind of impact what year two looks like and year three looks like. So it's not a set. 15% one year, 5% the next, 4% the next. So it makes it more of a moving target, which it could be a little bit challenging. But what this shows is that the base increase before benefits would be 4.4 million, and then the total with benefits to cover that increase from the previous slides is $5.6 million. So that's just for the fireside. Going into the police pay proposal, a little tougher to read this one, but everything you see here in green is what people are paying more than what we pay here locally. So the only ones that we had a slight few, depending on the rank, that we were paying more than were Brownsville and McAllen. With the cost-of-living adjustment, that's where it actually looks like we pay better than, than all of them. But again, it's only one factor, because we know police, for example, are barely filling academies, and they do two academies a year, and we're constantly about 25 short. And then on the firefighter side, they've been able to fill their one-year academy, but it's getting tighter and tighter each year. And we know, once this academy finishes up, they're actually still going to be too short, just based on attrition. So we are early on, we've only done our third academy, but the trend is, we're not seeing as many applicants as other communities like Lubbock or other places. So one factor that may be the, the pay that we offer. As far as police's pay raise proposal, this shows the year-one increase of 15%. When you factor in the base increase and the total, you're looking at 7.4 million. Year-two, they were proposing a 6%, which is around 2.6 million, and year-three of a 4% of 1.8 million. So a lot of this major increase in year-one is really trying to get caught up, and then the subsequent year is trying to, to maintain. But like looking at the firefighter side, theirs is a moving average of the, the cities, so you could see that continue to grow, because we're not the only ones in negotiations this year, not the only ones that are looking at pay increases. I believe on the police side in Lubbock, it was a 15%, Toby? That they're proposing in this year's budget. So they're already getting double-digit increase that'll just have us further behind. As far as the combined one-year cost, when you factor both of those, we're looking at about $13 million to fund basically just the base pay increases. That doesn't factor in incentive pays, certification pays, any of those. So it's for 297 positions in fire, 379 police. That's approximately a 5%, I think 5.2% increase over the current general fund budget of 250. And then we just wanted to share with you the conservative new revenue at this point in time, because we don't know what property values are going to look like until July. We won't even have preliminary numbers for another month or two, and it's very tough to go off the preliminary numbers, because there's so many protests and changes that until, until you get that final document in July, you don't know what your full property growth is going to be. But we have estimated approximately 6.2 million conservatively that we might have available. That's with a 3.5% property tax increase. That doesn't have to go to the voters. That's also moving a portion of your working budget sales tax to recurring revenue, and also a slight sales tax increase for some of that growth, knowing we basically have seen sales tax starting to flatten out compared to previous years, where we may have to, might be able to, to squeeze a little more growth into that number. It's becoming tighter and tighter in the last, last 12 months. So that's 6.2 million, a very conservative estimate. That would be able, that would be used any given year to meet all your general fund needs, so not just public safety. That would cover ongoing annual operational costs, raises, inflationary increases, new positions, and that's for both categories. So police would receive some of that as well for their inflationary impacts. An example of a 3% raise just on the general fund civilian side, that's 1.85 million of something that you would typically know about on that side of the ledger. And then if we were to allocate that whole 6.2 million, we'd still have a shortfall of about 6.9. That's without factoring in the other pay requests I mentioned. Those would probably be about another half million to a million, depending on which ones we settle on. Of course, talking to both groups, obviously, the pay raises are the main priority, the main focus, so if we had to lose some of those others, I think there'd be some, some wiggle room there. So that's kind of the, the reality of the situation. We did want to bring forward some options going into the budget of how we might be able to try and cover up, cover some of this, this gap. Of course, the most unpopular would be a voter approval tax rate, which initially, we've already received feedback from council that we don't want to go down that path, but did want to put it out there as a topic in case public, public safety, police and fire were the one topic you might want to go out and go to the voters for. Of course, that could cover a portion of the, of the gap, could cover all of it, because you just pick what property tax you want to go for. So that's the first one. The other is potentially developing a new revenue source in order to reallocate general fund dollars to public safety. One of those that's been evaluated in the past is a street maintenance fee. That could be up to $14 million reallocated, depending on what fee you set and how it's spread out amongst the different tax, or different property holders, whether it's residential, commercial, multifamily. It's a, it's a calculation that's run based on the traffic impact to come up with that fee. So a portion of that could cover it. We've discussed, I believe in the past budget session, what if you swap fleet purchases to being debt-funded instead of cash-funded? This could free up capacity in the operation and maintenance side of the tax rate to go toward public safety. This would require most likely multiple recurring debt scenarios to move that direction, but it could free up to $8 million of ongoing general fund expenses. Through the budget year planning process, starting this month and into the, into the summer, staff can also review all options of open positions or expenses that we can cut back on to free up some general fund, to bring the city council to consider through that process. There could be $1 to $2 million available there. There, we thought initially there could be maybe more to that number, but the other piece that those overages cover is typically overtime and other expenses in public safety. So cost savings in one department typically helps with overages in another department. So keeping that in mind. So really to wrap up for y'all's discussion, after I, after I finish, is getting some feedback. What would y'all like, like us to try and accomplish as far as targets? Is there a percentage range or dollar amount that we want to try and go after, based on everything you've learned today, just this initial take on it? But most importantly, just getting some direction on some of these options I've shared. Want your feedback on that, but also we'd like the next few months during budget to really hone in on all of these options based on y'all's feedback and really wait to finalize these agreements. I think we continue to work on them, because we got to finalize all the language on the policy changes and just the documents themselves, but leave placeholders in there for the pay raises until we get to July, August, and know exactly what y'all are working with, because we don't want to bring you an agreement to approve that you can't commit to paying, obviously. So based on that, we'd have a better impact, understand the full impact of the property values in the upcoming budget, which will allow us to have a better expectation going into next year as far as how we can fund these. So with that, happy to answer any questions. I know Toby and Todd would also be happy to come up and give their feedback as well.
Questions, council?
I can just state my position. I'll be pretty black and white on it. As far as trying to make a decision today is definitely not something that I feel comfortable with at all.
Oh, absolutely.
I do have a question, though. When I was looking at staff review of all positions, do, does staff have any idea of maybe some positions that have sat vacant for the past three years, or do we have any number on that that we haven't filled?
We have started pulling that. That's where we came up with the $1 to $2 million, but it would require, I think, further discussions with those departments. Why hasn't it been filled? Is it because we don't need them, or is it because they're also not paying enough so we can't fill them? Really having those deep-dive questions to see, can we just cut them, or is there a need to, to keep them? But yes, we are running that analysis.
Okay. I'm sure I'll think of some more.
Okay, we'll come back to you.
Yeah, just a statement. I mean, I think we've all made it clear that public safety is one of our number-one priorities, if not the top, but recruitment and retention are huge. But recruitment and retention are huge. And I think that that is going to start with, you know, base pay and getting these guys where it needs to be to where it's attractive. I don't want our guys being tempted to go to a lesser market to be paid more. So I think we've got to be creative in looking at this. I agree with Josh, there's no way we can, you know, obviously make a decision right now. I agree with your recommendation, we've got to look at the budget, but to be look for efficiencies, you know, look to see what we can do to help meet some of these needs. And I mean, a lot of these, I think, are easy given. I mean, it's the budget stuff that we've got to take a look at to see. But my position is we need to do what we can to get there.
Thank you.
From my point of view, I like the presentation, but there's an awful lot of work I have to do to see what we need to do. I see your recommendations, I have seen what you want, but I want to see the hard, real numbers to where it makes sense. Now, I believe all these people deserve a raise and we're willing to work through that. But I think there's a lot of options we got available to us besides what's just presented here. I know after I've sat in on a couple of their sessions, I've left and gone home and done some work myself and after listening, saw the need, saw what they needed, and then tried to think about what we could do to make it beneficial to our employees. And it's very important we do this, but we need to do it right. And I don't think this is a one or two meeting discussion. I would like to see us really get into it, let each council member really dig with staff to see what is possible. Because I know today, myself, after looking at this, I think there's, you know, with a half a billion dollar budget, I'd like to sit down and really go through it. And I I know myself, I'm looking at budget for this coming year already, and I've been doing some stuff and some studies. I think we just need to really, really tighten our belts, look at what we got to do and look at where the needs are. We can't keep living on the high end. We got to get back to living on our means and that's where we got to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yeah, I would agree with what else I've here. I mean, I I think we've got to commit make a commitment for our community to public safety. And, you know, it takes people to be able to do that. And when you just look at the numbers and the attrition and the people that are retiring, the people that are going out of the end of our pipeline versus the people coming in, I mean, we're continuing to lose ground on that. And and I think everybody would admit pay is not the only factor in that, but I would say it's a major factor in that. And I think we need to be able to looking at at new and different ways to be able to compensate that. And that's not only true for our public safety, but again, it takes people to do what we do at the city and making sure that we're competitive and and we're compensating them well to be able to do that. I could see on one hand, maybe a cost of living adjustment. I don't know, maybe that has a factor into it. But also you have when spouses move here, they may have fewer employment opportunities. I mean, we may have some more things that that may challenge just the cost of living part of it. But I I think I agree with council member Sherlin. I mean, you know, it's not this simple, but at a half million dollar budget, if you're just looking at cutting your operations by one percent, well, that's five million dollars, two percent. You know, what I'd like to see and not only what we come up with, but but what are our options on that? And if we're looking at, okay, if we're looking at one one percent cut on expenses, what would that like, two, three, four? Because if you go up to to just a four percent look at that on on operational, and we may decide, no, that's that's too deep into it. But I think at least giving council options to know what that would be like would be, you know, beneficial in addition to what what else we're we're coming up with. Because I do think we've got to invest in our people, particularly our public safety has been a priority, but also looking at across the board to making sure that we're that we're providing competitive salaries, not only for those in public safety, but making sure with our employees to do and figuring out a way to do that. So and I and I look for you. Again, this is this is going to be a complex puzzle to solve in our in our upcoming budget as they always are. But I think it's something that we need to come up with. You know, some of these, I just don't see much of an appetite for on these options. I appreciate the options. I think we're going to really have to, you know, really look at sharpening our pencils and see what our options are to know what maybe the options would come back and and they're just too much. We'll have to figure out other ways to do it. But I think, you know, I'm I'm committed to looking at ways that we're that we're making sure our community is safe and protected and by making sure that we're compensating so that we can attract and retain our our public safety.
Okay, thank you.
Well said. Can I go back just a little bit to non monies factored into different negotiations? So do we have agreements on everything that that didn't hit the the dollar value?
I think we're pretty close on in principle, yeah, agreeing on everything.
Okay, so we feel like we've had a pretty successful meet and confer up to this point. A lot of policy things that we can we can work together on, we're coming together. So mainly what we're going to get to here is a is a financial crunch.
Exactly.
And so this is not a popular statement, but it is very realistic. And I think it's important in having good communication that we set expectations. So one reason that I think this council has taken the approach of we are limited to three point five percent increases as we move forward is because I don't feel like we have a constituency that we can go back and we can ask them to support a bond. And the fact that I would have my fire and my police as the one entities that I would I would feel like they would vote for every time. I look back over the Prop one monies that haven't been managed correctly for the past seven years. And I I think in reality, I don't have the trust in that account that I need politically to come and ask them for them for them to trust me again. And so just point blank, I think the way we've got to approach this is we've got a set amount of money and we've got to work within these parameters. You have five men up here that are willing to work hard for you. We've already prioritized you guys and we'll continue to prioritize public safety, but not at the expense of the the health of the rest of the organization, nor would you want us to. So with the mindfulness of understanding that we've got to have those civilian positions paid for and and we still need streets, we still need trash and other services that make it, you know, function, I think what we're going to do is is we really want to look at this in the way of like, where can we cut some of the fat? And I know I've been told every time I've sat down at budget, like, we're as lean as we can get, right? Until all of a sudden, we find a million dollars somewhere, you know? So I mean, personally, I just don't feel like we're as lean as we can get. And I think that 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 comes down to one principle. In business and in trying to run the city like a business, those people that work hard work hard and deserve to be compensated for it. And in any organization, you have people that do not work hard. And so if we can trim that and we can, we can bring more monies to the individuals that are earning it, then maybe that's what this looks like. And so for those of us that are pull willing to pull together, I think I think this is an optimistic conversation. I think it does require us to have maybe a due diligence on having some harder topics. So one thing that I would propose is what would you feel like would be the appetite for a scaled or a tiered decrease? So the boots on the ground at the bottom level, I think we got to prioritize them first. Those are the the monies that we've got to, we've got to have for for retainage, being able to retain positions, not training somebody, investing whatever it is, a hundred thousand dollars over a year, and then watching them leave. But as we come up the scale, when we get up, you know, say over a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, do we have a staff that can look at this? Maybe in just a one year look where where you guys are like, yeah, hold us flat, you know? Maybe ACMs, directors, city management, things like that, where where we can show our core and and our inner constituency like, man, the money's going to go where it needs to go. That's probably very unpopular, but I think that even if we are looking at the rest of the organization in in a small cola, we've got to be able to put the percentages where they where they're going to, they're going to return the most ROI. So would you be able to gauge, have y'all ever done anything like that in the past where we look at kind of a cutoff?
Police and fire specifically or across the board?
Across the board organizations.
It's challenging, well, particularly police and fire, but even in other departments, like, once you start adjusting them, you become a compression issue as far as if you give one person this increase, then they're right up next to the next person. So that's the normal challenge we have to to look through, but that's all stuff we can evaluate.
So compression, I think, is a is a factor that we're going to need to see the numbers on, like Councilman Sherlin said. Another thing that I think can be good in the way in which we we work this forward is is looking at merit on that high side. So so if we do want to run the city like a business, and I mean that in the right way with with business principles, then at a certain level, you're paid to perform. You know, if you're a hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year guy, I think your performance needs to speak to your increase, not necessarily the performance of the entire organization. And so that might give us a little breathing room on the higher end. And I wouldn't even begin to guess how many people we have or or what we're at there, where if we carve that out, maybe we're looking at a more digestible number.
Sure.
A couple of other things. What are the last four year increases? Can you tell me over the last four years what the the percentages were?
So the this year was four percent, last year was five percent, the year before was three percent. And I know I wrote down the others, but I don't have them handy.
Two and a half, three, some small?
It was less than four. It was like three, three percent range, I believe, maybe up to five.
Four, five?
No, one, five, two or three. Yeah, so it was two or three.
Roughly fifteen percent?
Yeah, over that six year time period.
Okay, I say that on the good and the bad. As a guy who'd like to say, hey, man, we've been, we've been doing this, council's been moving, you guys are, you're getting, you're getting paid. We can say that, but then we also have to say, man, everything across the board, the the trend doesn't change. You're still right there where you were.
Those single digits and everybody else is doing double digits, so we're just that much further behind.
Yeah, in the in the comparison. So at some point, we've got to get ourselves out of comparing ourselves to the five above and the five below, and we've got to compare ourselves to Amarillo, which is what does it take to live here and what does it take to want to be a lifetime fireman here? What does it take to be a sold out police officer here? And then I think that it shows a lot when you do this cost of living and how expensive it can get, that none of that's relevant because it all comes down to where you want to live, you know? And and you base that on who you want to live around more than anything. And that's the one thing we have, we have good quality people here. But we, I believe, are five quality individuals that will prioritize you guys above, you know, ourself, and will be willing to come out here and have some difficult conversations. The fleet lease is eight million?
That's what it would take to replace kind of the ongoing cash to replace the fleet. Yeah.
Well, I don't speak for council, but I love that.
It does take away the option of doing lease, though, if we go to the debt side, but it is an option.
What is the lease net in a way of like I'm?
The the idea was the lease is we were going to get more for our money so we'd get more vehicles. If we switched it as debt funded, we would lose that opportunity to increase the vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just the other caveat on that is on leasing or cash funding your fleet, it's on the operating and maintenance side of the tax rate, which is where that three and a half percent constraint is each year. If you were to fund that instead out of the debt service size side, it can vary as needed from year to year. And it opens up more capacity, I guess, on that three and a half percent range. If that, does that make sense?
A little bit. I think it's not necessarily what it sounded like to me. I'm not saying the rest of council doesn't get it, but if we could get some better education on that versus the lease, because I I would love to be able to see if if we get ourselves on a leasing program where we're turning these vehicles back every five years and we're we're realizing this much cash in our general fund, that's one option. The other one would be the the debt, the INS side that you're saying. And and I'd love to be able to split those apart and see them separate.
Okay, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. I think that's some good highlights. I I don't want our, I don't want our association and our presidents here to think that we didn't come here, you know, wanting to move forward and it's just a listening session. Like, I think we're ready to engage. Can can we get from you guys, these are the asks. I'm I'm going to hope that these aren't the walkaways, where you're ready to walk away from the table and that these aren't, these aren't like, this is the ask, this is what we need, this is what we'd like, right? Can I can I extend and ask to you guys, if you guys can maybe let us know your appetite? As you can see, we're willing to work and pull different things together. How much flexibility do you have in, let's take this at a year at a time? Right now, the the ask is pretty heavy on the front, you know, this this current year. What does that look like if you fold this out and and maybe what's your, what's your appetite? Toby, if you don't mind coming up, yes, sir?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, for the opportunity. So it has been productive sessions with with Mr. Freeman and his crew. They've been nothing but professional and and I appreciate that very much from all those guys. So I just want to give you guys some relevant numbers and and some history behind the asks, right? Always understand the why. So I want you guys to understand the why. So we did the ten city study, the the five cities above, five cities below in population, Texas wide. Those numbers were up there, roughly a fourteen point eight percent shortage. We're, that's, that's how far behind we are of those ten cities. That includes the two cities that we paid better than. We also did a regional study, so we wanted, we wanted to be fair and and do a West Texas region because we do understand the cost of living argument, although the the cost of living to me is is changed dramatically, especially since the housing change and the property tax change. So it it might be a little bit cheaper to get a house here in Amarillo than some of these other places, especially DFW. But I've looked, I've checked GasBuddy and and a gallon of gas and a carton of eggs and a loaf of bread costs the same here as it does in Abilene or DFW or Houston or anywhere else in Texas. So I think that is a little bit overblown as far as the cost of living. But the regional citywide study, we did Wichita Falls, Abilene, Lubbock, Odessa and Midland, kind of considered those are five regional kind of partner cities, cities our size. We came in about eleven point one percent below those cities, and that's with one city that we paid a little better than, that was Wichita Falls at about four percent. But Lubbock came in at twelve point three percent above, Odessa fifteen point nine, Midland nineteen point five, Abilene eleven point eight. So all those cities, when you averaged out all the ranks across the boards, were significantly higher. We're not also, we're not always just competing with other police agencies, we're competing with other jobs, especially PANTecs. So I did some research into PANTecs's pay, which takes a lot of our police officers. And I'm not saying we can come close to their starting pay salary, but with their complicated contract and how you figure out how they make their money based on their overtime and their regular rate, it's about ninety two thousand dollars a year. And our our starting recruits make about sixty thousand. Once they're a one year police officer, they make about sixty three, sixty four thousand dollars a year. So significantly behind those guys and they do take a lot of our officers, a lot of the people that we've put a lot of time and money and invested into. So we've definitely got to try and retain those. Some other police department numbers that I'd like you guys to know. We have averaged over the last five years thirty point four departures per year. That includes resignations, retirements, and unfortunately during COVID, a few deaths. So thirty point four, we we average about seven or eight retirements a year. So the rest of those guys are resigning. They're leaving the police department prior to their retirement. Just over thirty departures a year. So the way we fill primarily is with police academies, right? So you guys know that we've we've bumped it up to two police academies, two police academies per year. It was one police academy when some of us old timers went through, but we've had to make that change to try and get new recruits in. I can remember six hundred plus people in the civic center applying for the job that I wanted. And so we had a big pool to scoop out of. We don't, we don't have that same pool. August of twenty twenty, the academy that graduated there, which, man, it would have started six or seven months prior, we had two hundred and fifty eight people show up for that test. We pared that down, thirty one started that academy and twenty two graduated it. Fast forward to January of twenty twenty four, so this most recent academy that we just graduated, sixty four people took that test. Six hundred, two fifty eight, sixty four. That's the small pool that we're scooping out of. Ten people started that academy, we graduated seven. So the last few years, we've graduated five, nine and seven police recruits. That's a small number and that's not filling the thirty point four that we're losing every year. So right now, we are thirty sworn positions behind, three hundred and fifty out of three hundred and eighty, and it's not getting any better. We know the city had some, they keep a ninety day reserve, obviously, by law, and that part is good. Twenty twenty three, there was sixty nine point six million unassigned dollars at the end of the year, based on the audit. Fifty five point one million of that is in ninety day reserve. So doing the math, that's fourteen and a half million dollars that was in excess in twenty twenty three, and that money was spent probably on great projects, I have no doubt about that. The year before was seventy four point nine million unassigned, twenty twenty one was sixty five point seven million unassigned. That's unassigned. seven million unassigned, that's unassigned general fund dollars, and I know Laura and Andrew can better explain that than I can, obviously, but I know there's extra money there, and they're always put to good use. I believe this is a good use. Mayor, you mentioned the thirty point six million dollars in bond money that was supposed to be spent on streets over the last three years, and for whatever reason, wasn't spent, whether they couldn't get those projects done or couldn't identify what to do with them, but I, I feel the same as you, I don't think the public is ready to vote for more money, no matter what it is, I think they want you guys, us, to spend the money that we have on the necessities that we need. Public safety is definitely those necessities. So we cost out about the same thing, we, we actually cost out the positions that we have, not the available positions, so ours were thirty people short, we'd love to fill those positions, but we roughly came with the same numbers that, that the city did as far as cost. I know in 2021, there was a, a bond to basically multiply the city parks department tenfold, and we did that, we actually supported that as far as the police officer association. This is one of those times where we might have to buckle down and, and spend a specific amount of money on a specific purpose, just like we did the parks department back then. I'll close on this, I'll tell you this, I know of a ten year police officer, right now, I'm not talking about a brand new guy, he's been here ten years, so he's maxed out at his officer rank, he makes the most money you can make at the police officer rank, he's in the process right now of leaving, he's applied and is going through the process of going to Abilene PD. When he gets there, they'll accept him as a four year police officer, he'll make the same amount of money he makes right now, and in four years, he's going to make about sixteen point four percent more than he makes right now, doing the exact same job. And this guy's in a premier assignment right now, he's going to go down there and get back in a patrol car and ride a beat, he doesn't have family there, he just knows that he's going to make more money going there. We've lost officers to Plano, Allen, Lubbock, now Abilene, this is, this is a problem that has reached a critical level. We've had three groups of police officers shot at in the last two months, it's been a pretty rough year, to be honest. But the culture that we have at the police department is good, the leadership is good, the training is fantastic, and these guys have, have excelled at their jobs and taken care of business. But it's getting worse, and the amount of people willing to do this job are much less than it was five, ten, even fifteen years ago. So we've kind of sounded the alarm bells for several years that this is, this is becoming a critical problem, we are at, we are at a critical stage right now, we are far behind, we are not hiring, what we are losing, and we're continuing to fall further and further behind these other cities. It pains me to say this, but I'm, I'm going to say it anyway, I'm a third generation police officer in the city, my dad did this job, my granddad did this job, the joke is, I don't know how to do anything else, I don't have any other skills. My son's a seventeen year old high school junior right now, and he's kind of figuring out what he's going to do for the rest of his life. And I'm not saying he's going down the police path, but if he were, I would support him, but I would not recommend that he worked with APD right now. Not because of the culture, not because of the people, it's a great place to work, but they simply pay a whole lot more for guys to go out and risk their lives other places than they do here, and we've all got families to think about. So this is the time, this is the year, we're going to have to buckle down and find a way to do this together. So I appreciate you guys' time, I appreciate Mr. Freeman and his crew's time, and we're willing to work.
Thank you. Toby, any, any questions?
Toby, do you think on the, the low numbers on the academy, do you think the driving force is the pay? Do you think that that, I mean, because those numbers are abysmal, they're terrible. Is it pay?
Yes, absolutely. So when we send guys to recruit, and I'm talking twenty, twenty five years ago, we got all our police officers from the Panhandle, everybody from the small towns and within Amarillo came here and went to the Amarillo Police Academy, we're the premier agency in the top twenty six counties. Twenty sixteen, when all the anti-police stuff started, there was a giant dip, COVID also hurt employment across the board, not just police officers, but this is a nationwide issue, right? So our numbers started to dip seriously, so we've had to expand outside the Panhandle. So we send recruiters to Abilene, Colleen, Houston, Dallas, Oklahoma City, we send them all over the place, and, and the places you go are places with colleges, places with military bases, because you have to be twenty one years old to be a police applicant, so that's where you're really looking for your, for your recruits, and all the other police departments are doing the same thing. So when there's ten or twelve police departments at these recruiting events, and they're all lined up on the table, if I just got out of the military in Colleen, or if I just got out of college in Houston, and I don't have a tie to Amarillo, all I'm looking at is the bottom line as a recruit, if I'm, if I'm a brand new guy. Why would I leave an area that I'm familiar with and know and pays better to come to Amarillo, Texas? We can tell them how great the people are all we want, we can tell them how, how awesome our department is, but when they see the starting and finishing pay numbers, that's what they're basing it off of, and that's who's getting our people. So it's a recruitment and it's a retention issue, big time.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Peaton, if, if you have anything you'd like to add to it, we definitely want to give you an opportunity.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council, I appreciate the opportunity to get up here and, and discuss some of these issues with us. Going back a little bit, we entered meeting confer contracts back when we did, for the reason of recruitment and retention, exactly like, like PD, just like Mr. Freeman spoke of. When we started looking at some of those numbers and we started looking at those academies, just like Toby spoke of, on our last fire academy, we had, we ended up hiring nineteen guys, but we had to go through the forty one people that passed and, and made it to that level, just to get to the nineteen. I believe we've already lost one out of that, so we're, we're already behind the numbers. We as well are not getting the numbers of people to come in that want to come here, and then once we do get some, we've, we've, in the last three academies, we've lost several members to go to other departments because of that pay. We're just not able to, to retain these people whenever they come here. Some of the numbers that we discussed that Mr. Freeman put up on the board, we're thirty eight point seven two percent below on the cities that we chose to choose our average on at the rank of firefighter, and that's where we're recruiting people. Once we put our numbers into people and we start getting time involved in them, and we get training and we do all this other stuff, we're averaging eighteen, seventeen percent, where these guys aren't getting the pay either, and they can easily go to Pantex at that level, they can go to these other places. There are a few departments across the state that offer some lateral transfers, that's less, but these people are being able to go to other places and work. And I, I totally understand the cost of living adjustment, I understand those deals, I differ a little bit, too, just like Toby said, they've had three incidents recently where they've had involved shootings. It doesn't matter what your cost of living is, whenever you get shot at, it's the same. Whenever we run into burning buildings, it's the same, whether the cost of living is different than it is here, fire is all the same temperature. So no matter what we do here for our job, I mean, it does make a difference on those things, so if we can do that to protect our families, that's where we're coming from. All of the stuff that we have on our list of items that we wanted to discuss when we went to meet and confer was to make the lives of our members better. The only ask we really had that had a financial burden, besides some few other little small things, was the pay raises. And when we entered it, it was for retention and recruitment, and that's where we're at today. So we just want to maintain those and increase those numbers, so we can keep the good people here and bring more people here, we can get those people that we want to live in this community here, but it's going to take pay to get them there. One of the things that I did want to bring up, one of the things that we, we've asked for, and we've been operating under this new staffing model for a year now, Laura, is that roughly, is that right, about a year we've been doing this staffing model? Previously, our staffing model based a lot of our overtime on unscheduled overtime. We've been able to reduce that number, I believe, a little over a million dollars, one and a half million dollars, where we've been able to be adequately staffed, and we're not having to tap into that number. So those are some of the things that we've been able to do managerial to, to help out with, with those things, so that's, that's a cost. Over the years, and you look back at the time, our training has increased, everything that we do has increased, the things that we're asked to do during COVID, we managed vaccine clinics, we went around and did shots, we, we took care of going to the, you know, nursing homes. So we really stepped up to the occasion and tried to help out that community and follow that mission that we're trying to follow on a daily basis. So it does get kind of hard to bring these people in when we're asking these things, if our training and all that stuff that's increased is to help us get our ISO rating higher, which is going to also help the community, which also brings back and helps our mission. So all of these things are things that we want to do, but we have to have the people to do it, and we've got to have those people to stay here. So the, one of the things on our cost of, our, our ten city average that we talked about that's a little bit different, we are looking at a, this moving average that we talked about, but in our proposal, it's to work on that moving average, and we look at that number early on in the year in March, and we kind of set what that average is, so it gives, it gives plenty of time for a budget to look into those and see what those are. But if we get those numbers right, and we get up to where we are within that state average, where we're comparable to those, if we maintain those numbers, then each subsequent year like that, it's a manageable number. Obviously, the first year's going to be tough, not just because we got to get to those numbers where we can keep these people, and we can have more than forty one people to choose from, and we need nineteen or twenty.
Go ahead.
Any other questions?
Uh, any other questions?
Todd, I've got a question, and this is pretty minor, I mean, I get, we've got some bigger stuff, but I see on here, one of the asks is the cancer screening, that's kind of something we got behind last year, I know we funded it in the budget, you have any idea why that wasn't done?
No, sir, I know we're working on LifeScan, that's, I say that, that's the comprehensive cancer screening that we want to look at, everything that we do and touch in the fire service causes cancer, it's the number one cause of death in firefighters right now. There's companies out there that offer that, we, it was budgeted, we appreciate that, some logistical reasons, we don't have that right now. So I know we're looking at it, me and one of our chiefs went a couple of weeks ago, LifeScan donated a couple of free visits for us to go to, we went down to Lubbock, they've done it for, I want to say, five years now, caught multiple members of their department in cancer, pre-stage one, so these guys are able to continue to move forward. As far as where that money is right now, I don't, I don't know, Councilman Tips, where that is.
So the plan is to go through an RFP process, and through the meeting confer, we're actually going to put a member of the association on that RFP panel to evaluate them, unfortunately, we can't just go out and pick LifeScan, we have to go through a formal process, but the money is there available for that, that program.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Peaton? Thank you, guys, for being here, every one of you, appreciate you guys all being here. To direct staff, I think we, we kind of as a body seem to be saying that we definitely would like a thorough look at it from the budget side, you know, looking at everything from a lease or a debt option on fleet, a two percent reduction, potential, what that, what that looks like, tiered or scaled increases on the higher side, you know, maybe reducing those, and then some of the other ones, one question, was that a flat sales tax projection or did you?
Minor, minor increase, yeah.
So basically flat?
But we'll keep watching the monthly as we go through the budget process, but it's been relatively flat.
What was our increased year to date over our budget, do you remember? I want to say seven million, I'm, I probably, I'm wrong, right?
I think it was less than nine million dollars.
Okay.
Because we increased it quite a bit last year, and we're seeing those numbers, we're not, not seeing well above those numbers.
Okay, but I think if, if council can get all of this together, here's the solution. You know, the, the solution is not, well, let's just go ask for more money and let's just pay for it and we'll just put it in there, that, that obviously is something we've, we are all engaged in this discussion, and we realize that is probably not the path forward we're going to get to take. But on the other side, there's not one single fix to this, it's going to take a lot of different adjustments and a little give and take everywhere to get to the point to where we need to be. Now, some of that will be a little give and take on your end, but not near probably what you've been told. I think we're able to do a little bit more so than, than, you know, what the numbers reflect, and we're willing to work. And so I think we just direct staff to go back and look with this, do you feel like you got clear enough direction?
Yes, and we'll probably need maybe a full day of a budget workshop on this topic. I think to dive into all the solutions that we'll plan to, plan to bring forward.
Well, we look forward to y'all bringing that back and giving us a few other options, and then we'll be creative and we'll make sure that we're looking at everything we can to consider it, and then hopefully, within the next couple of months, we, we can have a good direction, and we'll be going into budget with our eyes wide open and kind of knowing what the expectations are. So thank you, guys, all for being here. Anything else from council before we, we move along?
No, and I think the timing may, you know, work out well, too, I mean, we're in the process of, you know, looking for a new city manager, we're about to get fully engaged in that, and, you know, that may coincide well with budget time to maybe get a new and different perspective on some things that we haven't thought about, because this is going to be a complex problem, and, you know, I think that person, whoever he or she may be, being in here is going to be a crucial part and working alongside us to kind of figure the, this budget component out as well.
Agreed, thank you, guys, appreciate that. It's four twenty five, we're a little heavier on the front end of the agenda than we are on the backside, the, the last non-consent, obviously, probably will go a little quicker than some of the discussions, so I think I'm going to take one more, and then we'll break for a recess, so if I can move us along to item seven C, we're going to do a possible charter amendment discussion, and we have Mrs. Coggins coming up here to give us a little history on what we did in the past and maybe what council could look at moving forward.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor, council members. Mayor Stanley asked me to talk to you a little bit about the process if we were to go through a charter amendment election and how that process worked in 2020. You're very familiar with the charter, it came about in nineteen thirteen, it was a document created by the people, we were the first city in Texas to establish the council manager form of government in that charter, defines the roles, duties, authorities and responsibilities of each branch of our government, legislative, administrative and judicial, and it defines the relationship between council and the city manager. Since it was created by the people, it can only be updated by the people through a charter amendment election. The last one we had was in November of 2020. This is the last section in your charter on the screen here that just defines when you can amend it. And then state law speaks to this on cities over five thousand population, you can take it for adoption or amending through an election, you can only do that once every two years if it's changed. If you take it to an election and nothing is passed, then you could do another election within two years. This is really hard to see up here on these screens, but hopefully you can see it a little better here, and we can send this to you separately as well. This is a list of all of the charter amendment elections we've had since nineteen eighty. The ones in green passed, the ones in orange did not, and I will tell you that 2013 election you see there was mostly cleanup and housekeeping items, so there were a lot of propositions that year. So let's talk about 2020 and how that process went, in case you want to do it, this is an option, and if you want to do it another way, we can definitely talk of other options, too. In 2020, we had a subcommittee of two council members that worked alongside a citizen appointed committee, and so we had nine citizens appointed to that committee, they were appointed in June of 2020, they represented six unique zip codes within the city limits, and then our two-member subcommittee of council worked alongside them. This committee was created by each council member bringing names forward and talking about it in a work session, at that same work session, they talked about the topics they would like this committee to consider, which created the charge to that committee. So for this committee, the charge was frequency of council meetings, housekeeping matters, council member terms and term limits, and council member compensation, and then they also opened it up that, to that committee to talk about anything else that they might want to bring up. The committee of nine members met four times, where they went over these different items on the charge, they were joined by the committee, excuse me, by the subcommittee of council, by the city manager, the assistant city manager and the city attorney for each of those meetings. At the end of this, they came up with their recommendations, and they presented those recommendations to council on July fourteenth, so it was about a one month process for that committee. On meeting frequency, they proposed amending the charter to require twenty four meetings per year, that's why we meet twice a month now, we used to meet weekly. On housekeeping items, they proposed eight propositions to amend thirty one different sections of the charter, including some of the things on your screen. Ultimately, council did not move this forward to an election. Ultimately, council did not move this forward to an election. And then on length of term and service, they proposed amending the charter to increase from two-year terms to four-year terms and to stagger those terms. Initially, no more than two or three council members would be elected for a four-year term so that they could get that staggered. They proposed these changes would take effect with the next election. And then on council member compensation, the committee decided not to propose any changes. So on July 21st, 2020, council discussed the proposals in a work session and they decided to call an election for two amendments. They called that election on July 28th and August 11th through the reading of an ordinance, and the election was held on November 3rd. On your screen are the two propositions. Proposition B was the one related to extending council member terms and staggering them. And as you can see, that lost by a margin of about 2,000 votes. Proposition C was to update the number of council meetings per year, and that one passed by about seven, excuse me, by about 9,000 votes. Just as you think about what y'all want to do, if this is a path you want to go down, I've put two of the upcoming election dates on the screen for you here. Our next election would be in November. This is a federal election year, so we would have other parties participating. The cost would be lower if we were to do something along with other organizations on the ballot. And then May 2025, we would be having our next city council general election. And so there wouldn't be any additional cost to do something like this beyond what we would spend. So, and up here, I just put, just for your information, approximate cost on the city to hold an election is around 70 to 100,000. And that depends on how many other taxing entities may be on there. And so at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this process. Mayor, did that cover everything you wanted?
Yes, ma'am. You did a good job. Any questions for Ms. City Secretary?
A couple of housekeeping things. So I guess there's a committee chairperson?
On this one, it was really the council subcommittee that kind of chaired those conversations. This was also, keep in mind, this was back during COVID and so we had Zoom meetings. And so our subcommittee was Mayor Ginger Nelson and Councilmember Howard Smith.
But if we want, if, if we left it up to the committee to determine who their chair is or if we pick a chair that it could either be a council member or maybe a citizen, then those are options for us?
Absolutely. Those are options. And I will tell you, Councilmember Simpson, we did have a spokesperson that was elected by the group, which was Bill Harris, and he's the one that came and presented the recommendations to council at the end of that process.
And in general, can a committee consider anything outside of what the council asked them to look at if in the discussions, are they limited to what we asked them to address?
I'm going to look at Brian to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they could, they could look at other things, other things, as long as it relates to the charter.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Any other questions for Mrs. Coggins while we got her here? Let's jump off into a quick discussion. This is not a meeting for you guys to tell me or, or us to discuss amongst ourselves what we think we would like to change with the charter. So you don't have to tell me whether you're for or against staggered terms and, and how that works here today. But what, what I am trying to gauge is this is going to be some work. It's, it's going to be a little bit of work in just the meetings and the dialogue and, and study and putting forward these ideas. This is going to be a lot of work on answering our constituents that are going to have different viewpoints and, and maybe an agenda here or there or a bias, you know, towards something. And so this is an engaging thing and I, I need a council that's willing to take on, I don't want to say it's a fight, but I think it's, I think it's a wrestling match for sure with this old document. I think it's well worth our time. I think it's something that we greatly could improve upon, the way in which we, we sat down and we said, we want to run the city like a business. No business would function like this. You would never take your entire board of directors and let them all leave and, and bring one in that's your new chair and, and everybody else sit down and within two weeks give a budget update and, and say, tell us what direction you'd like to go. You know, so like, and the way in which we could potentially add a couple of members, you know, maybe leaving it at large for those two positions, not getting into that argument of single member versus at-large, just taking one bite out of the apple at a time, right? Doing a staggered term, whether that's a three-year or a four-year, whatever that looks like, being able to roll three off and bring three on at one time would be very helpful. The three-year term, I like because it's shorter than the four and I think it has a better chance at the ballot box, but man, then you're having an election every year. So somebody's always running, right? And for us that are running on a two-year term, I think if we're doing a good job, you guys are comfortable with four years and we don't have to campaign 12 months into our tenure or our term. But then if we're not doing a good job, you guys sure love the fact that, man, it's only 12 more months, buddy, and you're out of there. Jimmy Joe tells me that about every other weekend. So I think that this is a discussion that is just about, does council feel like this is, this is time well spent for you guys at this time and, and we could take advantage of this November election? So I'll ask down here on my right for place one.
I mean, I think it'd be time well spent. I just don't, I mean, I don't know if right now is the time to do it. I mean, with everything going on with city manager search and doing all these things. I mean, I agree, like I said, I think it'd be something to do, but I don't know if this November would be the right time to do it.
Counsel?
I would say it would be maybe good to leverage the national election. That way, it's, it's a lesser cost. Stephanie, did we talk about it's like almost double that if, if it's not during a election, correct?
It can be probably not quite double, but it's going to add at least 20 or 30,000 more to your cost.
So I mean, my look at it is if, if we, if not now, when? You know?
Okay.
So.
Okay. Councilman Sherlin?
I definitely think we need to go through it, work it out, make the changes that need to be changed and let's stop talking about it, let's just do it.
Okay. Councilman?
I agree with him. I, I, I think it's healthy. You know, one thing I know, you know, some communities like Dallas is for one, actually in their charter, it requires a review on a regular basis. I think it's every 10 years. You know, when I look at our history, I mean, we revised in 80. We did one thing in 89, but then we went 14 years without looking at it again. So I do, and I, I know we looked at it at 20. If you, if you throws those out, we're on about a 10-year period. So, you know, it doesn't mean that we have to vote on anything. It, you know, it, but I think what we're committing to do, let's just open up the issue and explore what the community may think because after serving here, I, I do see, you know, there's a lot of challenges with the way that we do things. The benefit is if you don't like somebody in two years, you can get them out. But, but I think there's a lot of challenges that kind of work. The, the way it works, it just, it, it's, it's a lot more short-term thinking because you're, you're in there for two years and they're, like I say, it can all happen at, at one time. And while I think it's a, a good system, I think it's worth looking at, can we develop a better system that the citizens would think would be an improvement on, on what we have right now? And I think it's a question worth asking and, and getting input from our community.
So I, I obviously brought this forward, so I'm, I'm in favor of taking on the challenge. I think it's time well spent. I think we have been willing to change everything that's needed. I don't, I don't know that we're turning the discussion away, honestly, as council. So let me go back to my, two on my right side. I understand the caution in, in, you know, timing and, and what we're looking at with the city manager. I would say that with a new city manager and a new set of eyes, we hope to be able to hear some feedback of, why do y'all do this? You know, well, what, what is, what is this for? Why, why would this be the benefit? So I would be, I would think we'd be able to capitalize having up until November, which really, I, I guess we probably should ask, when would the, the final decision be made before you put it on the, is it August?
August 19th is the final date to order an election.
And then when you call that election, do you have to have those exactly worded propositions on there?
Yes, that's part of the resolution to order the election. And I'm looking up real quick. August 13th would be your council meeting before. So you'd want to do it by that regular meeting or we could call a special meeting.
I guess what I would say, thank you for that. I guess what I would say is it's worth the exercise to get there and say we're not ready. And then you've got the work started and you push it off until, you know, either the May or the future election. But I think we could be ready and, and I think it's, I think it's something that is worth going after.
Yeah, I mean, that's just my opinion, Mayor. I mean, I think with, I mean, August is going to be here pretty quick and, you know, we'll be coming right out of budget. I guess if I had a better understanding as far as how, how we were going to structure this, if it was going to be citizen-led or we're going to have council members on it, you know, I think, uh, once we can figure out the structure of it, I may have more, I may be, you know, my opinion may change.
Yeah, so let me ask you, just the way in which they've done it in the past just so happens to be the way they did it in the past. So council could do a simple work session, bring ideas, discuss them, get staff input. Council could then move forward with the ones that we believe most represents the community. That's a real up and down way to do it. We could start there and then we could expand from there with a little bit better direction with a citizen committee that could then come and advise from outside of city hall a little bit better. Does, do I have any, any direction from council on, do you guys like the citizen-led committee idea or would you lean more towards like a work session like we're doing on our governance and end stocks?
As far as?
If we are going to take on this conversation and we're going to go towards proposing, you know, these, these charter amendments, either way, I believe we would need to facilitate this with a consultant that would be able to come here and, and help us navigate some of the nuances. But one option, citizen-led committee, other option, council-led with the potential citizen input in a different form.
I, I think I would prefer this to be a citizen event. You know, I mean, maybe a council member or two could be participating in that, but I, I do think this needs to be something that, that, you know, I mean, and I like that, I think we could probably discuss things that we think are important to look at, but I also like the idea that this committee could look at our entire charter, as they should, and come up with other things that they may suggest that we had not thought of. But I, I'd really like to, I think, you know, determine, you know, what a committee could look like, how many people it would be. I'd maybe, you know, maybe we could, I don't know if we let them determine a chairman, if we determine a chairman, I'd like to see maybe somebody other than a council member maybe chair that, let the citizens really take hold of that and then, you know, come back, that we charge them with here's some things that we would like you to, to consider and then let them kind of do their work and, you know, a council member or two could be, could be part of that, you know, maybe serve more of a liaison to council and let them come back in appropriate time with, with the recommendations.
Okay. I think some of the pushback, which is, which is a good caution from Councilman Craft, which is, do we have time to, to do this right? And so on the citizen-led side, we would need to keep it small and we would need to make it frequent, you know, to push hard with that. So, yes, sir?
Well, so looking at it timeline-wise, we've got four months, basically. If we don't get it done in four months, then we're, then we're going to the election where all five of us are up for election. So then we've got the campaign, we've got all that kind of thing, too. So that would be my concern as well. It's just, we've got four months to get this done. If we don't do it, now we're pushing next May, right? Is that correct?
Yeah. And it's a big charge for your committee, but last time around, they did it in about four weeks. And that started out with a letter from our subcommittee saying, here are the items we want you to look at. And then we met weekly and we covered one of those items each week.
Okay.
So it can be done quickly.
So it can be, I know it's, it's a big ask. It's a time commitment for those citizens if they're willing to partake in it.
And I, I think we could give the direction of like, it's low-hanging fruit in the way in which let's go after three, four items that we think we could put on that, that thick ballot already, right? That we are going to get the most return here at the city in the way in which we're doing business. So what we could do, if you guys are interested for this discussion, we could direct staff to go ahead and put together a little bit of a structure and, and bring it back at the next council meeting for a, a more in-depth look at it. And, and, you know, we could, we can direct staff, you know, each council member nominates two citizens. And then council will sit down and select seven and then we'll, we'll, you know, we'll select the chair, we'll add two council that'll volunteer. And then this is the date that we're going to start and, and we would need to get a consultant hired pretty quick. But I think we probably have some connections that could facilitate. So if that's okay, if we don't have any pushback on that, I think what, what I would like to do is bring it back for the next council meeting.
Okay.
Anything from, from council, you guys want to redirect on that or can we move forward with caution?
So.
Go ahead, Floyd.
No, I, I was just going to clarify, at that next council meeting, you want to talk about a committee. Would you all be interested in bringing names to that?
Structure.
Or do you want to do the structure and then names?
I think we'd be fine on this pace if, if we had staff looking out for a potential consultant, availability and timeframe, the structure in which we would do this and how council would operate. And then we'd be looking at first of May to nominating and, and contacting those potential committee members. And then you probably would meet in May, June, and then it would be back in July before council.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Is that good for, go ahead, Councilman Simpson?
And then when, when would we discuss the issues that we would like for them to look at?
So I think that in, in my viewpoint, I think that once we get that structure laid out and we could go ahead and nominate, I would love to call a work session where council could contribute on the front side versus the backside. I've always found it a little harder that everybody just went and nobody really talked about it and then it all came back somewhat pre-baked. And so I would think we could do a work session and then that way, those committee members then would have a head start.
And that's helpful for staff, too, because staff will research other cities and see what other charters do on those areas to give that committee some background and transparency to think through while they're considering it.
So if, if we rolled that out, we're talking about, is it April 23rd? We, we discussed structure and consultant. May, let's say 9th, I don't know the date, second Tuesday in May, we may could, we may could go ahead and get something scheduled there to where we, we would have a work session not long after that with the committee spun up. And so sometime in May, work session, that'd give them June to go through it and July to bring something back. It's aggressive, but I think it's worth it. Concerns?
I think it, just taking it one step at a time. I mean, the first thing we decided is, is something we need to look at. I, I think, I mean, if they can come back with this in three weeks and say we're ready, but if they say, we need more time, then I think we just cross the, to me, we just across the election timeframe when they're ready to report to us. I mean, we'd like to consider a November election, but there's no need in rushing this process if, if there's issues that they need to look at. So I think just taking it one step at a time of appointing them, giving them the charge and then keeping up with their, their timetable and how those conversations are going.
Agreed. Anything further on this one, gentlemen? Okay. It is 4:50. We'll recess until 5:00. Appreciate you guys hanging around. It's 5:02. We're going to go ahead and call ourselves back in, and we are moving on to item 7D, which is titled, "The Possible Park Sponsorship," but is just a quick discussion on how we support some locals.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor and Council, thank you. I just wanted to give you a, a little history of this agenda item. You may have been approached from someone about fees in parks or other fees related to events. And, and so we wanted to bring this discussion for you. On last budget, we brought forward to you adjustments to the park fees that were cost recovery-related. And so that has increased some of those fees significantly for some of our citizens and use of parks especially. So that's what has precipitated, at least recently, some requests. So there's options for the council to consider, and that's what we wanted to put out here for you today, was, one of the options for that, where park fees don't apply, is when the city's actually a sponsor of an event. Those types of events are like your 5th of July celebration, where the city actually is a sponsor of the event. Other entities, other cities have waiver programs available. Those don't exist in our ordinance, and that's something that you might want to consider in, in directing us to do out of this. But this discussion today is about that relationship of what type of events would, would be good for you to sponsor, and what types of events should we have a waiver system in place. The differences, as I see them, and, and there are many differences in those, but the primary difference is that a sponsorship is usually driven at council direction, 4th, 4th of July, 5th of July celebrations. The waivers is usually managed by staff. A much more effective way to deal with a volume or a diverse group wanting different reasons for fees to be reduced. There was a community that I found that had a reduced fee based off of income levels to provide some relief for that. So this discussion is specifically about the one event that I think that has been requested, maybe by, to more than one of you, but then also, give us a little clarification, how you want these handled. So do you need more than that?
Very good. Thank you, sir. We will try to just discuss it here in the way in which this came about. So let me start by talking about Mr. Kishuba. So I, I know a couple years ago, three, four years ago, you're given a directive, hey, parks is not self-supporting, you've got to get your cost recovery up. And so sure enough, he goes and he does the studies, and it turns out, we're charging $100, and then we've got $1,200 worth of manpower over the weekend, and we're doing all this. And so he's doing his job by putting values on things. However, in the way in which we now have a box that everybody's got to fit in, and, and it cannot allow for every circumstance. And so this is the Hundred Club that's bringing this topic up. Now, they didn't bring it up, I'm bringing it up based on, they, they had reached out and said, you know, our, our price to reserve the softball field was $500 last year, this year it's $4,000. And so in the way in which, I, I think it's a two-day event, and probably has a lot going in it. But the, the discussion that I'd like to have with council is waivers are, are an idea, and that puts it on staff. And, and it now, it becomes one more thing that staff has to exercise some judgment in. So on one hand, they're being directed, get your cost recovery up, but also give away a few events, you know, if you feel the, the need to. It doesn't not come to council, it already hits council whether we have the ability to offer something or not. And so the Hundred Club is a prime example of a nonprofit that is doing a good work fundraising for those line-of-duty officers. And, and they're meeting those direct needs. So it, it's, it's counterproductive to dip into that pocket, but then we've got our Parks and Rec Department where they're like, you know, look, this is an event, it requires all this, how do I treat you different than I treat the, the for-profit company that wants to come out and, and book the, the, the park for an event? Or there's a concert, and they're making the money off of the concert, the venue, taco truck, you name it, right? The, the list goes on and on for Mr. Kishuba. So the idea was this, council, what if council were to allow for each council member to have one event per year? This does a few things. This limits our availability to the public, so now it's not a, an, a never-ending waiver request where, well, you did it for Craig, I don't know why you won't do it for me. Well, he asked first, or whatever. And so this would limit it to one time per year. It says parks, I had actually asked if there were other venues that we had, Pavilion, Civic Center, other type things that if the, if the council member chose to, they would have the opportunity, depending on availability, just for a fee, either a discount fee, depending on what the cost would actually be to the organization, or, or a full fee waived, a sponsorship-type donation on behalf of that council member. The pros on it is, if I'm asked by, you know, a nonprofit, hey, can you do this? And I say, well, I already did it for the Hundred Club, I'm, I don't have the ability, you know, then, then it does give me a little bit of a buffer in, in not constantly getting asked, or maybe next year I could do yours, right? However, the, the con on it is, well, let me go ask Don if he'll give me his, or if I can talk him into giving you, you know, his or whatever. I do think we're in a little bit of a pickle in the way in which, this is a good example. I've got my Parks Director who's doing his job, and, and he's charging full price to one of our best nonprofits that's out there doing the work, and we don't have any latitude. And so all this is, is a discussion of latitude with the idea. I think council can put themselves in the crosshair a little bit and, and, and give a little bit of a buffer to staff, where it gives us five events per year of latitude, but doled out, you know, individually. So not as a body, but each individual could, could offer that if they were asked. I think I can just leave it there and just see, do you guys see a problem in the way in which we've got some nonprofits and some good stakeholders that, that are having to fit in a box that they don't fit in? And if so, do we have any other ideas that maybe are a better idea than this one? Or if this is a pretty good idea, how do we make it better? Or if this is a pretty good idea, how do we make it better and move forward? Yes, sir?
Kishuba, do you mind telling us about, I can't remember if it was the neighborhood groups or organizations that were there waived? What, three events a year, or how's that one kind of structured?
That's correct. Mayor Council Michael Kishuba, Director of Parks and Rec. We started the pilot program last year after we raised fees, and we got some feedback from the community. And so, what we did was we started a pilot program with those recognized neighborhood associations, where they could, as an association, waive three events a year. The other thing that we did in response to that was, we actually went out and did more education to the public. And what we saw was, a lot of the nonprofits that were using those spaces could just go use the park. They weren't asking for exclusive use, they were asking for just basically the use of the space. And they wanted community members to be there. So, that worked really well. And then, the recognized neighborhood associations, I don't know that we've received one yet from those groups, but we have that offer. I think we're getting one this year for one of the events. So, that's definitely a pilot program that's worked well, and I think something similar could work.
How many neighborhood associations do we have, recognized?
I think there's three at this point, four.
Four.
Yeah.
Okay, so it doesn't encompass the entire, but they can ask, it has to be in their neighborhood, correct?
I don't know that we specified that, we said that they could waive it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it could be any park, doesn't have to be in their neighborhood necessarily, okay?
And then, just to clarify, when you want to reserve the park and not allow anyone else to use it, that's where the fee comes in.
That's correct.
If you are just using the park and you're scheduling your friends, family there, but you don't have to monopolize that space, then there's no fee. It's paid for, obviously, by your tax dollars already. So, just a little clarification there. Let's just keep the topic on parks, let's not talk about any other space or anything else we may have. But is there any reason why we would feel like it's a negative to allow each council member to have one annual sponsorship that's offered by that council member?
I think it could, just thinking through this, and we had a talk yesterday, is possibly opening us up for allegations of discrimination of like, you know what? I ask Cole every year, and he doesn't, he never says yes, but you know what? He always says yes to this person. I mean, it could create some political backfire that we didn't really intend, right? We intend to be good for everybody, but yet, an allegation's made because they feel like that you're not being nice, or, you know, I'm not being nice because I say no, you know? And I don't know what we do with that when somebody asks, and it's like, maybe something that you don't agree with. And you're like, well, I don't really want to give you that.
How would the waiver process work if we were asked by somebody, we would hand them over to you? And then, are you gonna ask us whether we want to say yes or no?
Actually, typically in a waiver, the answer to that is no. What you do is, you have a waiver program that defines the parameters that you waive, that are developed in relation to state law and other considerations. And then, anybody that qualifies gets the waiver. So, it's not the same scenario as picking five or picking this one or that one. It's actually, a waiver would actually have an objective evaluation that applies to all.
But they're not limited? Like, the waivers are just unlimited?
Well, you have to, you would have to create your waiver where it complies with all the requirements in law and be equitable, okay? Once you create that, then you have set standards by you grant the waiver, okay? For example, the one that I researched the most was based off low income. So, it just had income levels that automatically qualify for discounted fees.
But if it's a nonprofit, we're not talking about an individual.
Yeah, so you'd have to develop a set of criteria of what that nonprofit waiver would do. And then, any nonprofit that met that criteria would be eligible for the waiver.
Then, we lose a lot of revenue off parks.
So, it could cost you some revenue. And then, over time, you could adjust that, if you lost so much revenue and impacted the budget, you would have to reevaluate your criteria, and you could adjust over time. So, the waiver has a component where staff is managing it, but yet, it's more defined.
Yeah.
Does that help?
Yeah. At first, Mayor, I'll tell you, you know, I thought it was a great idea. Then, as I started walking through it, thought, ah, might be some pitfalls here that we're not thinking about, because it's great for the community, but there might be some pitfalls as well. When we're trying to do something good, maybe we end up, maybe not, or put you in a tough situation.
Now, I would clarify, a specific event like the one you're talking about with the Hundred Club, they are actually recognizing, some of the people they're recognizing were past city employees who were deceased on duty. And that is a very legitimate reason to sponsor. So, you range from very legitimate reasons to be a sponsor to needing that consistency in a waiver.
So, if it's a sponsorship by the city, then the fee is waived?
Yes, it's actually, you own it, and you're a sponsor of the event.
Providing a park that we own.
Yes, and so, just the same reason why you don't pay the fees for the 5th of July, okay? Other things that we are sponsors on, in the water utility side, we are a sponsor of the Biennial Water Symposium. And in that, the water utilities actually pays for use of the Civic Center, okay? So, those are the types of events that you're sponsors on. So, many, many of the events that you'll be approached don't rise to the level of being a sponsor.
Right.
Do you need clarity on that?
Well, no, I don't think the clarity on the sponsorship, probably clarity on how it doesn't necessarily hit our director that, oh, this is a sponsorship opportunity, meaning he's just doing his job. And then, you know, if they don't say anything to us, we didn't know.
Right.
And they've paid a fee. Now, they may have a bad taste in their mouth, they may have qualified as a sponsor, but we don't have a directive to our director looking for those sponsorships.
If somebody was, anyone who I, in my view, would be a sponsor, we would be bringing that to you. A waiver doesn't necessarily have that. A waiver would be evaluating a set criteria, and if they qualify, they get it. But anything that's sponsored, just like the 5th of July or the Water Symposium, we bring that to council for awareness that we're a sponsor of an event like that.
Right.
So, the awareness component of a sponsorship is such that council should be aware of it. This is the city sponsoring an event. Now, waivers would be administratively handled through the department.
I think the sponsorship, you know, that already exists, right?
Yes.
And the same political bias concerns exist on that, you know, as well as like, well, your city sponsored it, and that's an event that, you know, maybe somebody didn't agree with, or if we choose not to sponsor it, we have the same issue, right? You're treating me unfairly.
Yes.
So, all we're saying is, they could always go and ask for a sponsorship if they qualify. Council would have five to give away that are council-supported, you know, intentional. And then, we have our neighborhood associations, which aren't really having to use these yet, so.
Let me just say on a sponsorship, if you limit it to five, that's just a policy of your sponsorship program. It's just a policy that y'all abide by.
Okay, other concerns on it from anyone else, yes, sir?
Well, again, on the sponsorship thing, if you have one, you know, a good group comes and asks you, and you're like, yeah. Or if you're like, man, I want to kind of keep it in my back pocket, just in case, I don't know who else is gonna ask me. I don't know, I'm just thinking through, I'm not saying, I think it's a great idea, don't hear me say, we're up here talking. But I mean, you know what I'm saying? And then, somebody asks you later, and they're like, you're like, oh, man, I already did mine, I would have done it.
My plan was always to tell them, hey, I gave mine away, call Don. And let you tell them no, but, I mean, I think I'm always gonna be giving it away. But I liked the aspect of, sorry, I can't, I already did one, versus the, hey, can you help me get sponsored? Staff didn't think it did this or that, and then, we kind of have that. But do we need anything from staff's opinion on direction for a sponsorship? Is that a better outcome to this conversation?
I think the one thing from our perspective, is just for council awareness. I mean, our portfolio in parks is everything from golf courses to the tennis center to the pool. So, just looking at what that scope entails, because, you know, when we do golf tournaments, typically, those are premium events because you're keeping other participants from using the golf courses. So, again, when we're looking at this, I just, for council's awareness, just consider all the different pieces to this, because it could be tennis, it could be swimming pools, it could be athletic facilities, it could be the zoo, I mean, it could be any of those. So, just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, because Don could be doing a nonprofit pickleball tournament for the height impaired, because he's a shorter guy. So, but you're gonna get all these different ones. So, maybe we're stepping out there a little too far, and we need to back up. I'm happy to listen a little more.
So, I think to help on that comment, historically, sponsorships are something that is integrated with city. So, this softball tournament has a component that's partially the city recognizing those police officers following it, that are city, we're city employees. You don't typically sponsor the nonprofit that you're talking about. That goes in, other entities use that waiver for those. When you look at other cities, they have waiver processes in place for those nonprofits or the individual fundraisers for certain events, you know, for certain individuals. Those are more waiver components. What you're talking about in sponsorships are something that's integral to the city and its function, okay? And that is a judgment, in my opinion, of management advising the council and mayor on that component. In this one case right here, I would advise you that a sponsorship would be great, appropriate, related to that they're recognizing past city employees plus others, okay? So, obviously, y'all had a discussion about the 5th of July celebration, and it just automatically became that you're a sponsor of it, right? So, those come generically through those types of discussions. Waivers are a whole different process, and they're more formal. And again, they're operated by staff. Does that help distinguish between the two?
Yes, sir. Any other questions, council?
So, I mean, so we have a checklist somewhere that says, okay, to qualify for a sponsorship, here's what you need to be doing, or is it just?
No, it's an informal discussion based off past practices.
Well, that might be something we might want to look at, just so people have expectations as to whether, instead of this just kind of whatever, you know, the city, whatever the, I mean, I don't know, it just seems to me the expectations of what we're trying to achieve by being sponsors of it and partners in it. But on the other hand, the problem that we're trying to solve is?
Well, we have one protester who wants basically a waiver of the fee from the $4,000 to something much less.
And is that something from here on out? I mean, is the problem that we've upped the fees so much that people aren't prepared this year to spend that money?
That's one aspect, I would have to defer to that individual if that's a permanent challenge or a one-year challenge. I think it's gonna go beyond that.
Well, I think probably everybody's gonna tell you it's a permanent challenge. I mean, because, you know, but I mean, if it's a temporary problem, because ultimately, we're defeating the purpose of trying to do cost recovery, if we're then saying, okay, everybody's got to pay their way. But now, we're providing waivers and exemptions, and then, some get it, some don't.
Yes.
That's not necessarily fair to all the citizens. Now, maybe a short-term solution, but it might be in order. But I mean, longer term, if people need to get that money, I mean, can they fundraise in the community? Can people do, I understand maybe if they didn't know it was coming immediately, but is this something that we need to focus on solving a shorter-term problem with the expectation? At some point, you're gonna be expected to pay, because we need, to be fair to all citizens, we need to do that.
I think that we're experiencing, one of the first responses to this, and it's gonna be challenging to say how many we're gonna have over the next year. I think it's a shorter-term problem in one aspect. However, I think an ongoing, a repeating event annually like this one, they may have the expectation that they get it every year. So, you'll have two different views in that. Some will see it as a short term. There are options for them to go fundraise privately or other methods, just as there are in others. So, it's hard to put everybody in the same box in the answer. Does that help? I mean, it's, I think there is a short-term impact of, they're not used to it, they don't understand that the fees arose that much that fast.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just think it's a slippery slope to go down.
Yes.
And it's defeating the purpose that we talked about at the beginning to say, we love people to use our parks, but, you know, people that don't use our parks are having to subsidize that, so.
And I think that's why it's here for discussion, because it is that slippery slope. And we need to understand everybody's perspective, management, operations, and then, the elected officials' concerns.
I think listening to the caution in it, it's not the first time I had what I thought was a good idea until I talked to Don. And so, sometimes you just gotta take a step back and rethink it. I think probably the right step forward would be, it's more of a lack of education on our side, I think, than anything. Can we get a list, an updated criteria on what the waiver criteria would look like? And if that's something council would want to put into the ordinance?
So, yes, we don't have one, so we can propose criteria.
Okay.
Obviously, you'd have a great amount of input to that criteria, okay?
So, I think that, and then, the sponsorship that already exists and the way in which we do certain sponsorships, if we could get that listed, what is that core function? Sponsorship criteria that you guys are working off of to be able to say, oh, the Hundred Club is obviously one we should be sponsoring?
Well, let me ask, Andrew and Laura, did you have a different perspective of why we sponsored, besides it just had some impact to core city function? I mean, that was just historically, what we viewed it as from management. We don't have a written policy, it was just certain events were sponsorships and certain events, we did not have the waiver. So, it's just a matter of how you, we'll put that in writing for you and provide it to you, and that could formalize that process, but we'll get that to you.
Well, I think definitely if we could put something in writing and have it for future, that way, it's not as arbitrary. Plus, we would like to limit it, I would believe, so that, you know, it would be something that if you qualified for, you would have an expectation of, well, we qualified, we're booking it, we know we, every year, we're getting this, versus, well, next year, it would be, because that's gonna make Kishuba's job even harder.
Yes.
So, last year, you sponsored me, and this year, you need full price. You know, it's just, it's gonna be a mountain for him. So, the more we can clean this up, and then, I think taking it out of council's hands, putting it all in a formalized process, better than my idea.
So, I hear that a proposed criteria for a waiver.
Sponsorship and waiver, is what I would think.
And then, define.
Can we separate those?
Yes.
Yeah.
Those'll still be two different things, those'll still be two different things.
Right.
Okay.
Appreciate the discussion on it, gentlemen.
And I would say, I mean, I'm empathetic to the challenge of people getting kind of sticker shock on that. So, I'm not saying it's like, and maybe there's some things that you would look at doing in the short term, because I think if people kind of got, but I just want to make sure that we're not setting up for their expectation is for longer term, because again, that just, but no, totally, when people, when they're supporting our parks and they get the sticker shock, you know, maybe there's a short-term solution for it or kind of figuring that out. But we don't want to just turn them away. But the expectation has got to be, I mean, we can help in the short term, but ultimately, to be fair to our taxpayers, we got to figure out, you know, how to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Kishuba. Thank you, guys, for the good discussion on that. Moving on to item 7E, we have a update from Tom Sherlin on our convention visitors bureau.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman.
In case I mess this up, I got Sherman Bass in the back to bail me out. So, hopefully, I can get through this without any problem. In our last meeting, we talked about three key issues. The CV Board approved the change in language in the Articles of Incorporation and the 501 status and filing by law amendment. Number two thing, the CVB marketing team gave a presentation on the impact social media has on our market. The CVB hosted influencers from London, England, and which resulted in 56,000 estimated media value. The CVB also hosted Explore the Wesley, which resulted in 48,700 estimated media value. Then, the visitor board, primary social media platform are Facebook, TikTok, Instagram. Now, efforts were being made to focus on growing YouTube, Shorts, and P interest. Last thing, we talked- Last thing we talked about was the 2024 Route 66 festival planning is underway and the CVB staff has begun meeting with all the appropriate city departments, tourism partners to ensure everything planned well. The CVB will again partner with the other counties on Texas Route 66 for this year's festival. If anybody's got any questions, you can direct them to Sherman.
A very entertaining update, sir. Appreciate you doing that and, uh, keeping it brief. So, uh, that takes us through item 7E. Um, we are on to item 7F. Uh, any requested agenda items from council?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. Moving right along, we're going to move to, uh, section eight, our consent agenda. Does anybody have anything on the consent agenda that you need pulled off or further discussion on? Okay, seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We accept the consent agenda as it appears on the, uh, whatever this is.
That's the agenda.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So I have a, I have a motion and a second for the, uh, consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion passes. Moving on to our non-consent items, item 9A, we have Mr. Brassfield here coming forward, to take us on this one. Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I get the pleasure of helping you knock two birds with one stone. So my presentation will cover items 9A and 9B as they are both, uh, companion resolutions. So I felt like it would be important to, uh, do a little bit of background and get everybody caught up to speed as to what brought us here today. The applicant is, uh, JES Development Company, and they started this process on their project back in, uh, 2022 with an application for some housing tax credits. And so the housing tax credit program is administered by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, directs private capital towards the development and preservation of affordable rental housing, uh, for low-income households. These tax credits are awarded to eligible participants to offset a portion of their federal tax liability in exchange for the production, uh, or preservation of affordable rental housing. And there's two types of, uh, housing tax credits that, uh, you may see as, as council. Uh, one is the competitive, uh, 9% and the other is the non-competitive 4%. And I didn't realize I was supposed to be clicking through all these words.
It did go that way more.
Go that way more. There we go. So this program, and I apologize for that, uh, was designed to provide a source of equity financing for the development of affordable housing. It maximizes the number of affordable units added to the state's housing supply, and it ensures that the state's affordable housing supply is well-maintained and operated. Uh, it also helps prevent losses in the state's supply of affordable housing. Uh, city councils are often asked to provide resolutions either in support or, uh, as a, a resolution of no objection. Uh, it helps the applicants earn more points if the council, uh, passes a support, a, a resolution of support, uh, and they get a few, few, fewer points if it's just a resolution of no objection. So Estacado Estates is the project. Uh, this project is going to be located at South Washington Street and Southwest 58th. Uh, the project is going to be a $13.7 million, uh, 46-unit, 55-plus community, I think is how they're often referred to. And the rent range for these apartments is going to be somewhere in the 399 to 1104 a month level. And that their target audience on this is going to be those with income levels of 15,000 to 34,000 annually. Uh, the, the development team, uh, JES has completed over 120 affordable housing developments across the, the country, and all the imagery in this presentation are from their, their properties. The original resolution on this was passed by the council in February of, of '22, and it supported their application for the housing tax credits. Uh, but due to recent economic factors, their financing gap in their NOI needed to be made up by limiting property taxes. So on the agenda today, uh, resolution 24-2, uh, would support their application to the Affordable Housing Program, uh, to assist them with obtaining those funds and, uh, help them make up that gap in their development cost. And resolution 24-3, uh, is in support of their partnering, partnering with the Panhandle Regional Housing Finance Corporation, uh, to create feasibility through tax exemption. As part of this process, JES has committed to returning 25% of their development fees, uh, going back to the Panhandle Regional Housing Finance Corporation, uh, thereby returning some of that savings back to the Amarillo community. Uh, so for reference, this is an image of, uh, where they are proposing to construct this, and here are some additional images of some of their projects. So in conclusion, just to recap all of this, uh, 24-2 is in support of their affordable housing, uh, program funding request, and 24-3 is in support of their partnership with the, uh, Housing Corporation. It would add additional affordable, uh, elder housing op, options in the southeast quadrant of Amarillo. It does meet with our comprehensive plan goals of diversifying Amarillo's housing stock, uh, which includes well-maintained affordable elder rental units. Uh, the proposed use is consistent with uses allowed in the general zoning district. And again, 25% of the property tax savings will be going back to the Panhandle Regional Housing, uh, financial, Finance Corporation. Perhaps most importantly in this presentation, no city funds are being requested, uh, with this presentation. And so as such, the staff, uh, our staff recommends, uh, approval as presented. And if there are any questions specific to this project, Mike Ash is here from JES and Black Councilman Sherman, I brought backup.
There you go. Questions, counsel?
So these buildings would not ever hit the tax roll. Is that correct?
I don't believe so. Mr. Ash?
Good evening. Thank you for the welcome, uh, particularly for the panhandle, panhandle weather welcome. I drove up from Sweetwater this morning, uh, lived in Wisconsin for a long time, and my drive this morning was as terrifying as any winter weather I ever had in Wisconsin. So thank you for that. Um, in terms of your question about the tax rules, uh, it may at some point in the future go back on the tax rules. What will happen is we will probably live with the property, uh, for 15 years. That's the compliance period for the tax credits. At the end of 15 years, the property may be sold, may be transferred to somebody else. The Panhandle Regional Finance Com, Commission will get a right of first refusal, so they may have the opportunity to buy it, or it may be a market rate transaction that will happen after 15 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, counsel?
So let me just, so the original plan was it would be taxable property.
Yes, sir.
And then the gap is where we need to fill in at?
Yeah, what, what's happened, I mean, you're all familiar with what's happened since then. Uh, I looked up the, the numbers that we submitted our application at this morning. When we submitted the application in 2022, the estimated cost was about 10 million. It is now up to 13.5 million. When we submitted the application in 2022, the interest rate was in about 5.5%. It's now about 8.5%, which reduces how much we can borrow for the project. And when we submitted the application, the pricing that someone paid for the tax credits was 88 cents per dollar of credit. It's now dropped to about 80 cents per dollar of credit. So we've lost the ability to borrow as much as we could. Uh, the cost has increased and we've lost the ability to bring in as much investment as we could. So yes, it, I regret that I'm here asking, uh, for the tax exemption. The only thing that makes me feel good about it is that it is with the Panhandle Regional HFC. It is a local group. The benefits will stay in the community, and the housing is needed in the community. It'll be a high-quality housing project for a long time.
And the, the property tax relief you're getting is just the part that would, the city charges, or is it all of it?
I believe it's all of it. I think because of the HFC owning it, they will be entitled to a full tax exemption.
But it only requires approval from us, not the other taxing entities?
Yes, what, what we need the approval from you for is when we finalize the partnership with Panhandle, uh, Housing, we'll have to go back to TDHCA to get their approval for the change in ownership structure. And one of the things that the Texas Department of Housing really wants to know is that the community still supports the project and supports the tax exemption. Uh, they don't want, uh, there are other instances where HFCs or community housing development organizations have come in and sort of crammed down the tax exemption on local communities, which has then resulted in upset people, uh, rightfully. So they want to make sure that we're talking to you and making sure that you still support the deal and the exemption.
Any other questions?
This may be a question for staff. When this exemption was created, was there a reinvestment zone made for this or no? Since it's a prop, I mean, it's basically property tax abatement?
This type of, this type of incentive doesn't require a reinvestment zone. Those, there are different types of incentives that require a reinvestment zone. But this is strictly related to this private development and getting the tax break that they're asking for, as described.
Do you happen to know what the total abatement is? I mean, you're saying 13.5 million for the?
Yes. When we originally submitted the application, we pro, we proformed the taxes at about $39,000 per year. So that would be the tax exemption, uh, the, the tax loss that you were giving up, uh, across all of the taxing entities. The, a tax credit project is assessed at a different, using a different method than just market rate development is. There is a state mandated, not that they mandate the cap rate, but the state basically has passed a law saying that the local assessing jurisdictions have to develop a cap rate every year that then gets to apply to NOI. So typically the tax assessable value of these developments is less than market rate housing, and I guess I'm saying this to suggest that the loss to the city in terms of the foregone revenue would not be as much as it might be with other organizations or projects.
So it's a $40,000 a year abatement, city portion only, I'm assuming?
That's on the entire property tax.
Okay. Uh, I think that would just be the city portion.
Okay.
But are you, are you asking the other taxing entities? I, I wasn't.
We're not at this point, no.
Okay. And so the, my, here's kind of my, my sticking point, and I'm, I'm just trying to figure it out as a, as a business guy. The, the deal can't happen because of a gap, and it's a $13.5 million deal, but $40,000 per year is what's connecting this?
The $40,000 per year allows us to borrow probably $800,000 extra, uh, just because of that difference. The other thing we're asking for is we're asking for a resolution supporting our application with the Federal Home Loan Bank. We're asking for a $1.6 million from them, uh, which we won't know until later in the year, but between those two and the amount of deferred developer fee that we're going to be having, that will make the project whole. We'll end up paying, uh, ourselves back over time, over the 10 to 15 years to make the project whole.
So you have some lending benefits that, you have some lending benefits that happen along with this as well?
Yes, sir.
So the whole deal, there, there's more going on than just the tax abatement?
Yes, sir. It's not just the tax abatement, uh, in that 40,000 per year, it's how much it allows us to borrow extra.
And of the 40,000, 10,000 a year is going to the Panhandle Housing?
Uh, more than 10,000 per year. They'll be taking 25% of the developer fee. I don't know what that is off the top of my head. Um, but they also will be getting a fee for using their nonprofit status to buy materials, uh, and save us on material pricing and things like that. So they'll be getting more than just the 25% developer fee.
Okay. Further questions, counsel?
Now, Steph, now, y'all are coming and you're recommending this. Based on what? Like, why are you recommending this? I mean, I, I get, got the presentation. I don't think I didn't pay attention, I did. But recommendation, how do you see that this benefits?
Well, given the, the, the location, number one, uh, we need more housing in the southeast quadrant of Amarillo. Uh, this does provide, uh, the 55-plus age group, um, you know, an additional option. Personally, I've, I've seen the benefit to it because my own mother lives in, in, in one of these types of facilities or, for lack of better terms. And, um, again, it, it's just, uh, again, it, it's more from a housing perspective, I, I think, than, uh, than anything else was, you know, why this was recommended for approval.
So you feel like there's a big need in, a need in the city or there's a, there's a gap here in this housing, this type of housing? Is it an apartment complex or is it extended? Like, it's, it's not necessarily elderly, but 55-plus is what your target is, correct? Is that, is that criteria for someone to, uh, rent an apartment there?
Yes, sir. It'll be 55-plus. Every member of the household will have to be 55-plus. It is independent senior living, so it's not assisted living. There will be a level of services, mostly social services, uh, uh, fitness classes, community get-togethers, uh, there'll be light chores, uh, valet, garbage removal, changing light bulbs, those sorts of things. So there'll be some services there for the seniors, but not assisted living.
Other questions, counsel?
So again, the question, I guess, and maybe this will be a staff question, so, you know, I, I, I mean, I don't know if we don't pass this, whether the project falls through, which, which could mean there's no additional senior living. But from a taxpayer standpoint, you know, help me understand, you know, there's a gap here. Theoretically, you're expecting taxpayers to help fill in the gap for that. What, why, why is that better for the community?
Okay. So a, a couple of things there, uh, that you mentioned. First off, uh, this res, these resolutions add points to the project. So if the project qualifies for points in another manner, it could be successful without the resolution. That very seldom happens because they need all the points they can get to get there. So, uh, second is that under, uh, current conditions, uh, in Amarillo Housing, uh, this is targeting and in, uh, the lower-level income, your, uh, your segment of your community that, uh, has special, uh, rent needs, uh, that don't have, uh, sufficient or quality housing, uh, in existence today. So there is a, there is a portion of your community that this is benefiting. How does that impact the taxpayers? Uh, probably in a positive way related to other services that these individuals may need in, in other assistance manner, uh, such that their income allows them with the reduced rate to pay for other things, utilities, fuel, everything else that they pay. It allows them to live in a, in a standard that's acceptable related to the reduced rent. You saw it was 399 to, what, 1,100 and something? And so, uh, it's probably based off their income level. And so your lower income level, the lower they are on the income level, the more benefit they get on a, on a rent, uh, assistance basically under this plan. And that's how it benefits the citizens, that you have the lower-income, uh, portion of your, uh, community that have a quality living option. Does that help?
Yes. And have we done these before?
Yes.
I mean, has it pretty common?
Uh, not real common in Amarillo. Uh, it's not, it's not real common that these are successful in Amarillo. We've done resolutions that have not been successful. Uh, my memory is off of two, Andrew, uh, may remember, but there's one on the south, uh, uh, side of town, uh, near I-27, and there was another one on North Grand. So they're typically located in these areas where they most benefit the community.
And you say not successful. What, what did that mean?
That means that, uh, we passed the resolutions and the entity, uh, did not score enough points and the, and the project did not proceed. And that's still a possibility if you pass this resolution, that they're not selected, they don't score enough points for other reasons. But this helps that process, uh, to score points, to get those, to qualify. Uh, I, I know in some cases in the past, there were applications in Amarillo and Lubbock, and Lubbock scored higher.
And do we have any idea how underserved we are in this type of affordable housing?
I, I can tell you when we, when we submitted the application, we also had to have a third-party market study done, and the third-party market study found that the capture rates, which is how many, what percentage of the population this, the property needs to attract to be successful, was very low. The rates were 2.75%, somewhere in that neighborhood. And typically TDHCA does not get worried about capture rates until they get up to 20%. So the rates are pretty low, suggesting the demand is there. I'd like to talk about a couple other things, if I may, that just have been brought up. Uh, there are two resolutions before you tonight. One is for the Federal Home Loan Bank and the Affordable Housing Program. I want to point out that resolution does not require any committee, any commitment from the city. No funding, no documentation, no risk of any sort. So no matter what happens with the tax exemption, if I could ask you to consider that resolution separately and pass that, that would be a help. If the tax exemption is causing you significant concerns that would result in your voting against it, I wouldn't mind if we tabled and came back. against it, I wouldn't mind if we tabled and came back to this after we did a little bit more of analysis and tried to address some of the other questions. In terms of why you may not have seen this before, it's because with a 9% credit, historically, the 9% credit has not needed any assistance from local communities. The 2020, the deals that were approved in 2021 and 2022 and 2023 have all been impacted by what we talked about before with the interest rates and the investment rates and construction costs. So we are in the process of working through almost all of those deals right now. I was in Sweetwater this morning, and again, this is not to suggest anything other than the fact that a lot of communities are facing this and having this discussion. We're talking to, I think, all of the communities that we did deals in 2021 through 2023 with, which includes Grand Prairie, Sweetwater, Waco, Tyler, Lockhart, Abilene. Now, we're not doing Abilene because it's got historic credits and it's okay. So this is not a, a request that's, it's obviously specific to the city, but not a problem that is unique to this city. It's a problem with the tax credit deals from 2021 through 2023, basically across the state.
Can I ask you a question? Business question. So with the low income that you're hitting, I'm guessing y'all get subsidized from the federal government?
So there's no subsidy for the income or for the rents. What happens is if we build a, let's just say a $10 million project, and restrict it to affordable, the, the income levels that are targeted by, by the federal government, then we get credits based on the construction cost. The credits used to be sold at 88 cents per dollar, in which case we would get $8.8 million in credit. Now it's 80 cents a dollar. So we get $8 million in credit that we would sell and then apply to the project cost. So instead of having to borrow, you know, typical deal, you'd probably have to borrow $7 million on a $10 million project, we'd be borrowing $2 million for the project instead of the $7 million.
So how do you make money?
We make money through the developer fee. We also are the management agent, so we'll have management fees. We also are the syndicator. We bring in the investors for the tax credits, so we'll make money on that. We're a fully integrated developer of affordable housing. And right now, we're hoping to make money on it as a development fee. Right now, we're not.
Okay. I apologize ahead of time. I'm not tracking on, on this item. So I'm looking at your first, the first resolution basically is just stating that we support, we support you to go apply for a loan, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then in the second resolution, I'm not finding anything in here where it talks about tax abatement or anything of that manner. Can you help, can you help educate me on that portion?
Sure. We have had conversations with Panhandle Housing about a partnership that would bring them in as a general partner and allow the property to become a tax exempt. I believe the resolution does talk about support for a tax exempt status, maybe in the last or second to last line. But it's our partnership with the Panhandle HFC that would allow us to have the tax exempt status.
I do not see it, no, sir. I apologize. Unless, Brian, you can help me, if you can help where it says that on here?
So I don't have that resolution printed out. I'm looking at the. Actually, what I'm looking at is a printout. Looks like they're both AHP resolutions.
Did, is this a duplicate? You, you think 9A and 9B duplicated the resolution?
Yes, sir. We just found out there's a mistake in the packet.
Okay.
See if we can pull up the correct one real quick for you.
Yeah. That's a great catch, Councilman Craft.
I can understand why you're puzzled. Sorry about that.
No, I mean, no worries. I'm learning just like anybody else.
And again, if we need to come back to finish this discussion, or because it may have been improperly posted, I'm happy to have this tabled and come back.
Let me, let me ask you. You may know on the, the total points, and I'm totally unfamiliar with how the point system works, but you, you would need our support and then you would still need to go and get the remaining points. Could you give us a status on where you're at on that scale and what the process looks like after you leave here?
Sure. The, what you, what you've heard is not necessarily entirely correct. In 2022, the resolution to support was absolutely critical for the project's success. If we had not gotten that resolution then, the project would not have gotten credits. We've gotten the credits, so the resolution we're asking for now doesn't affect the scoring. It does affect TDHCA's willingness to let us into a partnership with Panhandle. So it, the resolution we're asking for today is instrumental to the project going forward. If you decided not to pass the tax exempt resolution, we'll still continue looking for other funds to plug the hole. But again, certainly would appreciate the AHP resolution tonight.
So would you say you have all of the credits that you need to move forward?
We have all the credits we're going to get. It's not all we need.
Okay.
When TDHCA came out and asked developers about what would be needed to make the projects whole, developers told them we would need 50% bonus credits, and TDHCA came back with 15% bonus credits, which is not enough to make them whole, which is why we're here trying to plug gaps.
And then counsel greatly appreciates with, you know, the lack of familiarity with this, your, your willingness to say, hey, let me go do a little more work and I'll bring it back. Maybe, maybe we wouldn't move to table, maybe we would move to postpone, like indefinitely, just because we don't know that you're, you're coming back. I would ask if there's, do you have a preference on what the motion would be, or do you not, Brian? Postpone versus table? Okay.
But what you're asking is for us to approve item A, correct?
Yes, sir.
For the application.
Well, let's verify. Is A or B the one that would be the application and the, the willingness to partner?
So I don't, 9A is the application for Affordable Housing Program funds from the Federal Home Loan Bank. 9B is a resolution of continuing support for their partnership with the Panhandle Regional Housing and Finance Corporation.
So we, in theory, we could take no action on 9A because it's not represented correctly, right? We don't have the supporting documents?
9A is correct, 9B is not correct.
So 9A is correct. You are seeking the Federal Home Loan Bank.
Yes, sir.
That's where you need to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we could take action on 9A, take no action on B, or we could postpone B, depending on whether you were, you were coming back?
I'll be back. Whenever you will, can schedule me, we'll be back.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel?
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, appreciate you. Mr. Brassfield, you got anything else you want to clear up on this one?
Well, just, just for the purposes of this discussion, I did have some of the numbers sent to me. As far as Amarillo goes, according to the, the 2021 housing study that was done, senior housing choices are limited for rentals by incomes and availability. There's currently 645 units located within seven properties, and they're all effectively 100% leased at this point. Based on this study that was done, the city of Amarillo can absorb comfortably another 200 age and income restricted units. So just another tidbit of information.
I think that's good info to have moving forward. I would ask for a motion on item, item 9A alone, please.
I move to adopt resolution number 0409242, as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on 9A? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
We have a 4-1 vote on that one. Mr. Brassfield, do we need to do anything further with you on item 9B, or are you okay with our intention?
I believe we're, we're good.
Okay. Would ask for a motion on item 9B, please. That's correct, yeah.
Oh, it's not gonna let it die. I see. Okay, so I make a motion on item 9B to postpone.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to postpone item 9B. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 5-0. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Yes, sir. We'll, we'll see you when you get back. Moving on to item 9C, we have a public hearing here. So we have Ms. Shannon Tollison coming forward to lead us into this one, then we'll open the public hearing.
Counsel, mayor, good afternoon. How are you all? So I could not have picked a better day to bring the drought contingency plan in front of you guys. So I'm very excited to present this information to you today. So just a general purpose, right off the bat, we are in an area prone to drought. So obviously, one of the first things people think of of this area is that the drought contingency plan is very specifically associated with protection of the quantity of water available. And fundamentally, that's incorrect. It's also protection of the quality of water available. So overall, the intent of the drought contingency plan is to ensure that we still have the primary core components, which is sanitation and fire protection, that we have protection and preservation of public health through, again, the quality aspect of it. We have water that is free from contaminants and microbiological activity for welfare and safety, and then to minimize adverse impacts for your storage and emergency situations. So in the event we actually do have large-scale drought buildup or something along those lines, you have the ability and resources for fire protection and, and public health and usage. So why are we doing this? Because the state told us we have to have a drought contingency plan. You have to follow certain standards and guidelines. So the Texas Water Code and the Texas Administrative Code both cite drought contingency, contingency plan requirements pertaining to how you handle the use of, of your water resources during limited capacity type situations. So the drought contingency plan must be formally adopted by your governing body for the water provider and documented. The adoption of the resolution must also be documented associated with that. We are suggesting no changes from the 2019 drought contingency plan, so it will be a continuation for another five years. The drought contingency plan has to be renewed every five years or modified every five years. So the last approval was in April of 2019, so we're here again in 2024. So again, just the general consensus is that we are looking to promote public health and safety and the overall welfare of the water resources we have available to us in this area. Just to give you a little bit of history, the last implementation of the drought contingency plan, we went into stage one drought contingency in June, on the 22nd of June in 2022. We were under phase one drought, stage one contingency plan for seven days. So stage one is entirely voluntary. We recommend reduction of water usage and recommend the staggering of irrigation support, so like odd addresses one day, even addresses another day, but it's entirely voluntary. And within seven days of the first time we issued it in that amount of time, subsequently, we were back down under drought contingency conditions, just because the community actually helped us from that voluntary standpoint, and they were supportive of the overall function. Now, the requirements, we do have to consult with retail and wholesale customers associated with this. We have to provide notice to them. We have to have open communication with the public to provide suggestion associated with the drought contingency plan. And we have to do critical reporting. So whenever we run into those, reduction of quality or quantity availability, at that point in time, it is our responsibility to submit routine reports associated with that. So one instance would be like a reservoir level report. So I can happily tell you today, right now, the reservoir capacity is typically 28 feet, and we are sitting comfortably at 27 feet right now. Actually, we probably just increased that rate right at this point in time. In, in a continuation of very difficult to view charts, here is the stages of the drought contingency plan. All of this is in the actual drought contingency plan that will be posted, but essentially, this is just the limitations of what starts in each stage of drought conservation practices. So for instance, stage one, that is that our reservoir hits 60% capacity or 30 million gallons. Subsequently, our usage throughout the entire community exceeds 84.7 million gallons in that point in time, and that continues consecutively for five days. After that takes place, then the director is authorized to issue stage one of drought contingency, which again, is entirely voluntary. It isn't until stage two that the switching of addresses becomes mandatory, and it isn't until stage three that watering in the time of 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM becomes mandatory. And Mayor Stanley, you don't get involved until stage five. So at that point in time, you're in a water emergency, you have 95% reduction in your volume and availability. So at that point in time, it's issued as an emergency declaration for water management at that point in time. So that's.
Questions for Ms. Shannon?
Just a history question. What's the highest stage that we've ever been on of, on the contingency plan?
Stage one.
Stage one?
Stage one.
That's it?
Yes. So we do a very good job of maintaining our wellfields and our reservoir and our working relationships regarding the Cremaux Water Resources. So stage one is historically the, the highest level we've reached. Now, I'm from San Antonio. Do you want to know how high I've reached down there?
No, I'm sure. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Shannon, good presentation. Appreciate that and the education on it. Thank you. With no further questions for Mrs. Tollison, I would go ahead and open a public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion on item 9C.
I make a motion. We accept resolution 040924-4.
Second.
Have a motion and a second with no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Item 9D, we have Mr. Kendrick coming up here to walk us through, it looks like an easement, vacating.
Good evening, mayor and council. This ordinance is proposing, is considering the vacation of a total of three easements, a 10-foot wide public utility easement, a 10-foot wide public utility and drainage easement, and a 20-foot wide public utility and drainage easement. And this is all in the vicinity of John David Circle and Plum Creek Drive, within a lot, 11G of Quail Creek Edition, unit number 37. So the three easements are located on a vacant tract currently that is under development for a new medical facility, and these easements are located within an area where the building is supposed to be placed. The request was reviewed by the city departments and local utility companies that have utilities in the area, and there were some utilities that were identified in these easements. However, they are being relocated at this time, both city and private franchise utility company. All parties were agreeable that it was appropriate to proceed with this request, to allow these easements to be abandoned. And the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval of this request with a unanimous vote.
Questions for Mr. Kendrick, gentlemen? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With no questions on this guy, I would ask for a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8128.
Say, say again, Mr. Hartman. Nope, no public hearing on this one.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Okay. I move to adopt ordinance number 8128, as presented on the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this one? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Item 9E, we have Mr. Hooper coming up here. We tasked him with this one on our massage ordinance, so he's going to give us an update, see where we're at.
Yeah, thank you, mayor and council. There's a lot that's happened since our last meeting, and this item here today is considered repealing ordinance 8092. I wanted to talk a little bit about what we have done since the last time that we met, last time we talked to counsel. We actually met, let me get forward to my stuff here. We actually met with five local licensed therapists. We had a great meeting, it was very productive. We just reached out to a couple of them that I knew and said, hey, can you produce a few other names so that we can get together and we can talk about this and just sit down at a table? And we did. We spent about an hour understanding what they were going through, understanding their concerns, and also learning a lot. We look back at this as kind of the, going back to the drawing board for us and, and starting over. So I wanted to kind of go over, and I promised them that I would do this because they were in attendance for the last meeting, and one of the things that they requested is that we, we bring this information that we talked about behind And one of the things that they requested is that we, we bring this information that we talked about behind closed doors up to the public and to you as Counsel, so you can understand where they were standing from. And, and a lot of it is a misunderstanding of the ordinance language, and we got that talked about. You'll see there on the first bullet, long-term clients actually started becoming a little bit uncomfortable with calling them and scheduling. They said they've had some clients that have been with them for several years that have said, I'm a little nervous about making an appointment with you right now. So we addressed that. Reputation of licensed therapists being grouped into the same category as illegal massage establishments, big difference between the two of those that we learned. The only thing in common about it is just the word massage, but totally different, and I'll be able to explain that to you as we go. We also discussed the challenges with law enforcement and with the enforcement of existing laws versus, it's the Occupational Code 455 versus things that we would consider to be criminal offenses. So there's two different things there, and there's a little bit of matched area in those, but they are two totally separate items. And so some of the solutions and suggestions that came from that meeting were the repeal of the existing ordinance to create separation for the existing language. In other words, take that completely off, put it back on the deck and start all over again. Create some new language that would exempt the licensed therapist. And also, just again, as I said, that they mentioned, to clear the slate to prevent any further confusion about the ordinance. And then the second piece was to educate the public, and this meeting right here is exactly what it takes to become a licensed massage therapist and what code 50, or what the Occupational Code says in section 455. So I'm going to do that now, if you don't mind. Also, they did present with us to, present to us a website that we looked at. It's called lookbeforyoubookamassage.com, and it's actually very interesting to go to that website and read some of the things that were on there. It was very educational because it even has some information in there about enforcing the laws. It helps law enforcement, there's toolkits in there for citizens, there's toolkit for all kinds of stuff in there, so good stuff. What we did learn, Occupational Code 455 highlights and defines the license requirements. They're pretty stringent. They specify detailed qualifications for various professions such as massage therapy, ensuring individuals meet those educational requirements and training standards, and also establishes regulatory standards for comprehensive guidelines for professional conduct, including their ethical standards, legal requirements, best practices, and so forth. Also ensures public safety and prioritizes the well-being of the customers, mandates adherence to safety protocols, hygiene standards, and other measures to protect the health and welfare of the clients, and facilitates licensing processes, which includes streamlining the, the procedures involved in obtaining the professional license required to become a massage therapist. So with all that said, I wanted to go over the requirements to become a licensed massage therapist. We learned a lot, it was kind of eye-opening to see that they had 500 hours of supervised coursework in therapy studies, 200 hours taught by a licensed massage therapy instructor, dedicated hours in a lot of different things there, anatomy, physiology, kinesiology, pathology, hydrotherapy, the laws surrounding massage and business practices, professional ethics and standards, even all the way to CPR, and then a 50-hour internship program that would allow them to get their license. So passing required examinations, there's a lot that goes into that too, to prove their proficiency in all the things that were required of them. So with all that said, get to the, the meat of all of this presentation, that is to ask Counsel, our staff recommendation is to repeal ordinance number 8092. So we can go back and form a committee, we can begin including discussions with the police, or the city marshal, city management, legal department, to start working on some solutions to get to the heart of the problem. The heart of the problem is not licensed massage therapy offices. The heart of the problem is the other items that we've talked about, such as human trafficking, such as illicit massage establishments and things like that. We'd like to form that committee, bring back a new ordinance at a later date for consideration with some of those solutions that we have talked about and, and agreed to. And then also, if we can, we may, we may or may not be able to bring back an ordinance to you. We may be able to use the existing laws, we're learning a lot about that. In that case, we would need to have a tactical approach to it to be able to use the existing laws that we have. And so it would probably come to you in a form of something other than a public meeting so that the tactical issues are not discussed at the microphone here. So with that said, again, our recommendation is to repeal ordinance number 8092, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Yes, sir, questions?
Donnie, can you tell me the reason for the original ordinance? Like, I know the original, original, original was 86, but the, the reason that the revision came through?
Yeah, so, and, and I wasn't here at that time, but the way that, and we've had this discussion, but the way that I understand is it would came, there was a request from Counsel to also change some of the language. Once staff got to looking at that, was to change the language of the original ordinance so that it was more modified to the terms that were, to, to accomplish the goals that we were looking to accomplish, and that was to find the illegal establishments and to go after them. But I think in the process somewhere, that got, you know, the language was easy to read on one side of it, we just didn't see the other side of that language and what it was doing to the people who are actually licensed for that occupation. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does, yeah.
Any other questions? What do you think is your timeframe?
Well, we're going to start immediately. If we repeal the ordinance, I think we'll get the committee set by the end of the week, and we'll get the, we already know, we've already had discussions. Everybody knows who those people are going to be, and we'll start the discussions and start diving into it, which we already have a lot of information, so I'm thinking that we're probably a month out from being able to have something that we can either bring back to you here or there.
Man, that's great, Donnie, I appreciate your work on this and leadership and willingness to get in there and, and have a good discussion.
Well, we want to get it right, and one other thing I may add too is that the people that we did meet with, they said we would be glad and honored to help you if you have any questions along the way. They provided other names for us, they even will provide information to us on the establishments that they believe are not licensed. So we created some great partnerships from it. You try to look at the positives that came out of all this, and I think there's a lot of them, so thank you for saying that.
Real good, yeah, appreciate your time on it, thank you.
Absolutely.
If we don't have any discussion on this one, would ask if we wanted to make a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8129 as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from place four, a second from place three. Any further discussion on this one? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item nine F is our last item on the agenda. It is a public hearing as well, and we'll start with Mr., with Mr. Freeman.
Yes, sir, today I'm going to try and imitate Kevin Carter. He was unavailable to come present today, so I volunteered to, to present this item for y'all's consideration. It is a public hearing and consideration item for our newest reinvestment zone, number 24, not to be confused with the tax increment reinvestment zone, that's a little bit different, it has a different process. Really, the purpose of designating the reinvestment zone in this case is to allow for tax abatements to be considered. There's a process we have to follow before Counsel can enter into an agreement with the prospective business. Step one is to notice the taxing entities, as well as putting a notice in the paper that y'all are considering creating a zone. Zones can be much larger, they can be property-specific. We ended up in the last few years going property-specific because there is criteria that basically requires if you have a zone and one person's gotten a tax abatement, and here comes another business, then you have to offer the same level of tax abatement. So our preferred path moving forward was to do kind of the one-offs dependent on an actual project taking place. So they are designed to attract new industry and commercial enterprises. And then, as I mentioned, it's required to have the ability to offer a tax abatement. In this case, it is located in the city limits and not in the ETJ. For our other taxing partners that are also interested in offering tax abatements, we have to be the entity that goes first. Whether we offer a one-year, five-year, 10-year tax abatement, that gives them the ability to offer different terms if they so choose. So that's another unique perspective on this one. It is 20 acres that is being proposed for reinvestment zone number 24. It's located at Augustus Drive in South Georgia. The reasoning is to provide the Counsel the option, again, to offer an economic development incentive that's been previously discussed with Counsel for a prospective manufacturing facility within the zone. As I previously mentioned, you have to have a public hearing. We had a seven-day written notice, and we published it in the paper as well, so everyone knew that this was being considered. And within the approval process, the Counsel has to make certain findings that the improvements are feasible and practical, and that they would benefit the zone after the tax abatement is completed. And the criteria in this case, which is laid out in the Texas Local Government Code, is that the designation will contribute to the retention or expansion of primary jobs or to attract major investment in the zone that would benefit the property and that would contribute to the economic development of the city. This is the location map, it is just north of Cassique in the South Georgia Business Park. And today, again, it's a public hearing and first reading. Next steps would be second reading at your next meeting, which is also when the actual project and tax abatement will be presented by AEDC. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, sir.
I, question I have is you're wanting us to zone basically 20 acres for tax abatement. I really don't know if I want to zone 20 acres. I don't mind zoning for a project, but the thing we have here is, I don't know if the next Counsel wants to, if we have another business come in, want to honor what we do. And when we go ahead and make a zone tax-free, we're sort of putting the cart before the horse, aren't we?
Well, the zone itself does not approve the tax abatement or make anything tax-free. It's just creating the boundary, and then a tax abatement agreement can come later. So that's what would be coming next meeting. But if you chose not to approve the tax abatement, the zone stayed in place, it could sit there for five years till it expires without any tax abatements being approved. So Counsel would have options as far as that goes.
So we have to approve, just because we approve the zone, just current Counsel, if a project comes forward in that zone, we, that Counsel has to approve the abatement. It just makes it available.
You have to designate the boundary to even offer the opportunity to discuss or consider a tax abatement.
Why do we have to do that ahead of time?
Just a state law requirement. Yeah, you have to do it in advance, you could do it years in advance, or you can do it, the way we've been doing it the last couple of years, is we know we have a project, so we're doing it site-specific. In the past, the entire area around Centerport Business Park was a reinvestment zone. Now that that has since expired, now we do the one-offs for that very same reason that future Counsels have to deal with offering tax abatements maybe at different levels that they weren't interested in. This way, you can customize it by, by project and by zone.
I've, I've been doing some thinking on the way we do business, and I was wondering, you know, a lot of time, the way we have this thing going now, actually taxpayers are getting hit twice. We're giving land and money, or, and then we give a tax abatement. I would, my opinion is if our AEDC wants to give a tax abatement, which they recommend, I would rather see them pay that money theirself instead of put the burden on the taxpayer. I mean, if there's $100,000, and then they got to pay $10,000 a year in tax, I would say at the end of the year, AEDC wouldn't, if they want to make that kind of commitment, whether they want to call it a tax rebate, or we're going to give you a $10,000 incentive, I would rather see it something like that. But the way we're doing it now, we're, we're already giving AEDC X from hot tax.
Sales tax, yes, sir.
And then they're coming back to us, wanting us to give the city to give more. And so actually, the taxpayers in Amarillo are getting hit twice with this. And I would rather see us look at something a little bit different. I don't know if we want to discuss this today or, or what, but.
It probably would be a future agenda item, I think, maybe following up on the economic development incentive guidelines is really how Counsel is kind of giving their marching orders. I know the most recent discussion is we've gone to the step-down or trying to minimize the tax abatement standpoint, but that's certainly another conversation to be had of trying to reduce it further and offset it with sales tax incentives in its place.
Anything further? Yes, sir.
I think we've definitely moved away from, you know, the long-term abatements, you know, which we don't like because the city, it hurts the city, you know. But I think that we need to consider, if, if this is a, is the project coming forward, do we know what it is?
It, yes, it's a project Sage that y'all have discussed. It's posted for the tax payment on the website, so it's a manufacturing facility, local business retention and expansion project, about an $8 million investment. This one is a little unique, y'all are only planning as proposed to do a one-year, 10% abatement, so it'll be the lowest abatement, I think, in the history of City Council.
Ever, yeah.
Ever. Really, just, we just have to do something so the other taxing entities can do more if they so choose.
It was qualifying for a few other taxing entities.
Correct. We initially thought.
I can't remember if it was $4,000, what it netted.
As far as our taxing.
Very small amount of money.
It wasn't, and it was a one-time abatement, like it was just.
One year and done. We, we research it, there was no, there was no way that the county or the college could create their own reinvestment zone inside the city.
Right.
So we have to take the lead on it.
So by creating this, it allows the county, if I remember correct, the opportunity to offer their abatement, but we just weren't interested in participating.
I think theirs was going to be 60% annually for six years or, or something like that.
Right, but they were needing that in order for this to go forward?
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify that that's.
That's right.
That's what it was, okay.
Any other questions, Counsel?
We're, they need the full 20 acres.
Michael Kitten is actually here, he may know better, I think that might be for a future phase plan.
We, we've stair-stepped it to where there's a performance measure that's 12 acres at first, and then they have to do a certain performance to get the other eight. So they've kind of going to do two phases. So if they don't, if they don't perform to a certain measurement on the first 12, they won't get the other eight.
Okay, because I know they're, you know how much room they're using after where they're at now?
I know that they purchased 10 acres to the north of where they're at now, and they probably have about that same amount, 10 to 12.
Thank you.
Counselmember Shirley, in your scenario, if they do not perform, that eight acres would still be inside the zone, but someone would have to come ask in the future to get a tax abatement again.
Okay, so this was, in my opinion, we structured this well with AEDC. We, we limited what they got, but made it available for the other taxing entities to do what they needed to do. We just weren't interested in participating in that.
Yes, sir, correct, because that was the direction Counsel gave us. We just want to do the land and AEDC and not the other, but we had to come back for that reason.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Counsel? I, I would say, in the way in which this Counsel has an interest and, and, and influence in guiding policy, I think it's important not to get hung up on the procedural. This is a procedural step, and so it's important that we work along with our partners, and, and this is kind of a, an example of how they've, they've done it well on this one based on what our guidance was. And so interested in making sure that we continue to push forward in that work session that we're going to have coming up and those, those guidelines.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate the presentation. It's a public hearing at this time, we'll open a public hearing. Do I have anyone here that would like to speak for or against item nine F? Yes, sir, come on up.
Craig Altier, I guess as a matter of, I guess, ideological beliefs, I'm 100% against a reinvestment zone, and the fact of the matter is, is that I think the business, the city should have zero business in the tax abatement business. The school districts aren't allowed to give tax abatements, and you don't want to know why? Because they can't afford it. And we can't afford, as taxpayers, to do the same thing. You can, you can say you're doing this as a favor for the, for the county, or whatever you want, but at the end of the day, we're giving tax, we're picking winners and losers when it comes to taxes. All the people in this room, we don't get tax abatements, but we give them to the rich, and we need to stop that. We need to start coming up with a philosophy of how we're going to handle things in our city and how we're going to give taxes away. This particular company has had its handout and has got many handouts through the last 20-some-odd years from the taxpayers. And where does it end? We don't have a job creation problem in this town. We have a job filling problem in this town. All we are doing is shifting the seats around for $50,000 a year paying jobs. Those aren't real jobs. None of you up there makes $50,000 a year and could afford to pay your family, run your family on $50,000 a year. We need to set our standards up higher in Amarillo. Not $50,000, not $45,000 jobs. We need $100,000 a year jobs. And we have to get out of the business of picking winners and losers. And that's what we do when we give business socialism and handouts to businesses and keep on giving the rich the tax breaks while screwing the poor folks. The medium, the middle class is where we push that tax burden onto. And so as a matter of, as a matter of principle, I'm 100% against doing whatever you want to call this reinvestment zone. It just gives opportunities of giving more handouts to people who don't deserve it. If you want to create opportunity, then create opportunity. These are phonies. These are phony, these are phony jobs, these are phony acts. It's only people who benefit on creating $50,000 a year jobs are the owners of these companies. All you're doing is subsidizing them while you're picking, you're picking one business over the other because of what they're doing. So as a matter of principle, I'm 100% against tax abatements. And my, my, I'll finish up here. My argument, what you could do in regards to how, what you could do with tax abatements, you put that on the AEDC. So if they want to, if they want to give cash incentives in the place of tax abatements, then let them do it. That kills your budget every year by giving a tax abatement. If Kevin Carter and the AEDC thinks it's so important to give $100,000 tax credit to them, have them come up, once they've done their performance, hand them, hand them their tax bill into the year, and let the AEDC strike a check for that. Not you guys. You guys are wondering why you're trying to get raises for firemen and policemen? It's because the past three decades with the AEDC has been doing, shoving that tax burden off on the poor people. That's why we have a problem, why you have an infrastructure problem. And so what you're going to do by creating another tax increment zone here is you're going to hamstring future city council members, city councils, if they want to do it or not, at least in my opinion. So call it what you want. If AEDC finds it so important to give tax abatement, then let them strike the check. And when you guys start thinking about this next budget year, you start worrying about your cash flow, and they bring you the numbers of what you're coming up in cash, start thinking about all these businesses like Amazon and all these other business producers own beef who aren't paying any taxes. $50,000 a year jobs are not buying houses to make up for that tax abatement. Start thinking about it, gentlemen. Start putting the pressure on your AEDC to put their thinking caps on and become better negotiators. You guys demand it for your taxpayers.
Mr. Altier is a business owner here in town and also sat on the AEDC board, so as always, it comes across as a complaint. We welcome complaints, as long as you bring solutions. And so you're invited to our work session. It'll be a public meeting. We'll have that follow-up on those criteria and guidelines. We welcome your input. So thank you for speaking. Do I have anyone else here today that would like to speak at this public hearing? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion on item 9F. Perhaps I should ask a specific person for a motion on item 9F.
I move we adopt ordinance number 8130 as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second with no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have a 3-2. Three ayes are four, mayor and two. The two noes are one and three. Confirmed?
Confirmed.
Okay. Had a second from Councilman Tips. So at this, that item passes with a 3-2 vote. Appreciate the discussion and the comments and everything here. Look forward to working through the rest of this as we, as we continue to walk that procedure out. So that concludes our meeting today. Would ask for a motion to adjourn, and we'll get out of here.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, you're adjourned.